The time is now two o'clock. I'm going to call the town council work session for Tuesday, August 26th, 2025 to order. We're going to start with Summit County RTA formation process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here to do a quick introduction of our special guest today. As you all know, I am the board chair of the Summit Stage Transit Authority, not Authority, Transit Board, and I'm here just to do a quick introduction with Chris Louvers, the Stage Transit Director, as well as Bill Ray, the consultant that was hired to help us through this formation process. He has a lot of experience with doing exactly this, along with other local government work in the state. So with that, I will hand it right over to them.
Thanks, Matt.
Take it away, Bill. Take it away.
Yeah. All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Thanks for having me here. I just wanted to give you kind of a little background on RTAs and why we're here and hoping that not only Breckenridge but other local governments here consider working toward an RTA. So as you probably know, a regional transportation authority is a local government that is formed by two or more jurisdictions that come together to solve regional transportation issues. Those regional transportations could be improving roadways, supporting transit buses, rail. It could be supporting airports. It's all kinds of transportation issues. It's coming together to focus on those on a regional cooperative level. RTAs as a local government, once they are formed, do have the ability to seek funding from taxes, property taxes, sales taxes. They can issue bonds, but it's important to remember that they are required, just like any other local government, to get voter approval for that. So they can't just levy taxes without voter approval. They also have access to fees, tolls, and some other funding mechanisms to help with the RTA. So in this case, we're looking at forming an RTA, possibly putting it on the ballot. That's another important piece that ultimately voters also have to decide on the formation of the RTA. So we are working toward putting this on the ballot a year from now, or November 2026. And so that process is getting started, and there is a journey here that we're going to embark on, or we are embarking on for the next year, that will basically focus on creating an intergovernmental agreement. The state statute that allows RTAs is very prescriptive on what you have to have to put an RTA together, and that is an intergovernmental agreement. It's an agreement between all the local governments that want to come together and create this RTA. And that IGA outlines some very important things. Governance. How is the board going to be composed? The board has to be elected officials from the jurisdictions that belong to the RTA, but you can have one member per, two members per, you can have a ratio of members based on some formula like population or something like that. So a board. How are decisions made? You know, but is super majorities for budgets or other larger decisions? What's a routine decision? What's a larger decision? Entrance and departure from the RTA. How do you invite new members? How does a potential member leave? How are you going to fund the RTA? Are you going to use maybe an existing funding option? Are you going to ask voters for a funding option, a tax or something else? The IGA also includes service goals. That's another important thing. What is the RTA even going to try and do? Is it going to focus on transit? Is it going to focus on something else? So those are all parts of what goes into the IGA, and that's the work that we need to start embarking on and getting to work on here this fall, so that we can work through this intergovernmental agreement, so that it can go through all the prescriptive steps that are in state statute to do this. Why would we want to do an RTA? Well, RTAs do have a lot of advantages. A lot of them come down now to funding. The state of Colorado, through several pieces of legislation and C dot policy, are kind of putting extra value into RTAs, into regional cooperation. So RTAs are first in line for certain funding pots that the legislature has either put in motion or C dot grants. So if you don't have an RTA, you may not be able to access this money. Even the federal government puts a priority on regional transportation solutions, and RTAs have a better chance at certain federal grants as well. So there's a lot of funding opportunities that come from doing an RTA that can allow expansion beyond what you already have in the Summit Stage. It also allows for different communities of different sizes and different economic factors to come together and work together. So it's important to think that we could help, the RTA could include communities outside of Summit County, Park County, Fair Play, Leadville, Lake County, Kremling, other communities that might want to participate in regional transportation, but they don't have the resources or the know-how to do it on their own, but that they can be part of an RTA, be part of this more regional collaboration. A lot of times, RTAs in the mountain communities are really focused on connecting the workforce to the employment centers and the benefits of that, whether that's a quality of life benefit for the workforce, or getting cars off the road, or addressing parking issues, or all of those combined together. So RTAs that we might think of, and we have great examples to work from, the good thing is, we don't cut this out a whole cloth anymore. We have incredible examples. Rafta in the Roaring Fork Valley, it's probably the highest functioning transit system in a mountain or rural community in our whole country. It is the diamond-crusted, gold-plated example. They take millions of cars off the road, move hundreds of thousands of workforce to and from, and they even also move a lot of visitors between resorts, getting cars off the road, reducing parking, improving the quality of life in the Roaring Fork Valley. Eagle Valley, Core Transit, they took on and wanted to kind of do the Rafta model. They went a slightly different direction, whereas Rafta still charges for all their services. The Eagle County, Eagle Valley version really went toward free transit to try and get even more of the workforce to and from, more cars off the road. Parking was a major issue. They also included supporting their airport. I know that's not an issue here, but that was an important part of the Eagle Valley one. And now we're up in Yampa. Actually, today is a big day, because finally, our local governments in Yampa Valley are forwarding the question to the ballot there. So Route County, Steamboat, all the way out to Craig, they're forming an RTA so that they can go way beyond what they're, the meager regional service that they're doing between Steamboat and Craig in the hopes of making that a regular route. One of the big goals on US 40 there for them is that's become, we can argue it, either the first or the second most dangerous section of road in Colorado. So whether it's animal wildlife accidents or other driving accidents, it's become a very dangerous section of road. So they want to get more buses on there, more regional buses on there. And then they realized there's a lot of growth in Hayden, or growth potential for workforce housing in Hayden and Oak Creek. So they know if workforce housing is coming, you have to have a transit solution dovetailed with that, or else you're just putting more cars on the road. And so those are some of the ways that RTAs are being used and being contemplated. And so we're looking forward to working with everyone here in Summit County. I'm looking forward to it, to start contemplating, what are those benefits here for Summit County? How can we tie in other communities outside of Summit County to connect workforce and housing areas so that we can improve transit, quality of life, and all those things that an RTA, and hopefully bring new and additional funding into Summit Stage or whatever the successor system is, so that you can leverage an RTA to improve your transportation and your transit options. So I'll pause there, see if Chris has anything he wants to add. Happy to answer any questions and looking forward to working with your town as part of this process.
Nothing at all. Just by way of timeline, I was authorized mid 24 to start this process, authorized by the Transit Board and you all, at least indirectly. Three consultants will be necessary typically for an RTA. Bill, WR Communications, our lead consultant, Fair and Peers, a well-known transit study firm to help look at all the projects that the RTA would help solve and help make better, and then a legal consultant as well. So just wanted to make that point while you're thinking of questions.
Thank you for that. That helps. All right. Do you guys have any questions?
One question, you touched on the governance system. That was one of my questions. So it has to be elected officials, meaning the town couldn't say elect our transit expert to serve on the board. It has to be elected officials?
Yeah. Can I respond?
Please.
Sorry. Great question. Yes. RTAs must be governed by elected officials. So your town council would appoint a representative and probably a delegate or an alternate to the RTA board. So staff representing the communities could be, the RTA board could then create an advisory committee or something like that, where you could have staff, or even in other jurisdictions, they have advisory committees that include someone from major employers, i.e. resorts, that act as advisors, but the board itself must be an elected official.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies it. And then, Matt, I have a question for you. I don't know if we want to get into this now, but I'd love to understand a little more how a potential RTA could affect the town of Breckenridge, our free ride, our e-ride. I mean, I know you've done an incredible job, town as a whole, with our transportation options, that this potentially need more support and funding for those programs?
I would say yes, positive benefits through and through. There might be some efficiencies found with the RTA. You know, some of our routes that hit the periphery of town might be better served by the RTA, could be more regularly served, or just a different setup that might be more beneficial to us, not necessarily saving costs, but just being more efficient with what we have. So we can also look at funding to support the free ride through that. So I don't see any real negatives to the free ride. Yes, there would be adjustments, but I think to the benefit of our community here in Breckenridge.
Can I jump in on that as well? So you'll find out I'm an RTA nerd, and that's not on purpose. But so in Eagle Valley, when they looked at creating their RTA, remember, they had multiple existing local services, so Town of Vale, Town of Avon, Beaver Creek Resort, and then the larger Eco Transit System. Those towns chose not to roll their systems into the RTA, but already, though, they are getting those economies of scale by sharing maintenance facilities, better programming their schedules, so routes connect, so people can get that first last mile connectivity. So typically, if it's a well-put-together effort, it's only a net benefit to that. And there would not be a request unless you would want it to merge your system with the RTA. That does not have to happen. But interestingly, up in Yampa Valley, just real quick, Craig, the city of Craig, they, they would not have a way for people to get to their buses. They don't have park and rides. They don't have those kind of things to get to Steamboat Springs. So part of that RTA's goal is to then create a local system for Craig, because that will move people to the regional bus, keeping them out of the cars, and helping them access local retailers, schools, and the hospital. So those are all things that can be done through an RTA.
Have you seen microtransit as part of an RTA in different areas, or is that usually a separate entity?
Great question. So I believe down in San Miguel, so Telluride, Smart, they use microtransit efforts like van pools and things like that to connect the workforce and get them into Telluride and Mountain Village for their jobs. So absolutely, that's going to probably be up in Yampa Valley, maybe the first iteration into Oak Creek, and the town of Yampa might be a van pool until a larger, more developed bus route can be launched. First last mile and anything that helps people access those transit routes are really important. So even things like bike shares are a big part of RTAs. Rafta uses bike share, and that's a big part. So to connect people to the buses.
Excellent. And when it comes to the, to funding, I know that in the presentation, you had multiple sources that it can come from. Currently, we have about, I think, 0.75% of our sales tax goes towards our transit. Would that most likely be expected to go up, go down? Would, how would that look from a funding aspect?
I would say that that would be the decision-making and the regional conversations that need to happen in this process. That's exactly, it's not my decision, that's for sure. That is the kind of conversations I hope to facilitate as part of this. So Fair and Peers, their role is to kind of identify, if we're going to do an RTA here, what can we improve? You're not doing an RTA just to absorb your current system and do what you're doing now. You're trying to do something better and solve a transportation need or needs. And then we're going to say, well, how much is that going to cost? How much is more service here going to cost? And then, do we have funding from existing funding to do that? Do we need additional funding? If we need additional funding, what does that look like? Is that a sales tax, a property tax? Does that require infrastructure, park and rides, rolling stock? So then, do we have to do some kind of financing? Those are all the questions I hope we're going to start diving into here pretty soon, and that I'm going to help facilitate. But yeah, that's up to the elected officials and staff who are going to be representing their communities as part of this RTA journey that we're embarking on.
With regards to that funding, when the voters, if the voters approve to go down the road of an RTA, does that give the board of the RTA the ability to, to impose those taxes up to the limits, or if they decide to do that, will that take a second vote of the people?
Great question. So the way it works for an RTA is they are not outside Tabor. Any tax or bonding that they would want would require a vote. The vote can come in two different ways, though. So in the example of Eagle Valley, that just did it a few years ago, that I was the facilitator on, their ballot question asking voters to form the RTA, approve their community to join, to sign that intergovernmental agreement and be part of the RTA, also included a half penny sales tax to fund the RTA. That was approved in every community but the town of Gypsum. And so I will tell you that then that causes its own challenge, as the town of Gypsum now has to figure out, how do we get into the RTA? Up in Yampa, we also, one of my roles is, we do extensive community engagement, surveys, and polling to see what the community is and is not willing to support. And in Yampa, we decided just to do formation this year, no funding measure, because the voters there said, no, we like the idea of the RTA. We're not so ready. So they're only going to do formation on the ballot. Now, your first vote is each community voting separately. So when we do this here, hopefully in a year, voters in Breck are going to vote and say, the town of Breckenridge can join this RTA. Unincorporated Summit County voters would also vote to say Summit County can join this RTA. So it would be multiple votes, multiple, each community would have about. After the RTA is created, it's only one, it's a, it's, think of a special district, right? Fire district, school district. It would be then one district, one entity, the authority, and that board would have the right to put a question on the ballot, tax or bonding. But then that would be one vote, a simple majority across the entire RTA. So you would not have multiple ballot questions.
That's very helpful. Thanks. Another question with regards to our current free ride. I just want to make sure I've heard you correctly. So we would really have the option, probably with the RTA, to either continue funding it and running it down to Breck, or it could be absorbed into the RTA as part of our contribution? Is that accurate?
I mean, those are both possibilities. That's up to your community and the other RTA participants, right? That's, that's, that's a thing to discuss. I can tell you, for example, in Rafta, that the city of Glenwood Springs, they have a separate sales tax just in Glenwood Springs to support their local circulator service. But you know what? They don't want to run a bus anymore, so they can't, they turn that tax over to Rafta, and Rafta runs that bus for them. But it's still branded, it's not branded as Rafta Glenwood Springs Service. It's still City of Glenwood Springs Service, but they ask Rafta to run that for them. There's so many different models here. Almost the options are unlimited, but we'll have to be focused. We can't have unlimited options if we want to get this done in a year.
Tom?
All good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If a community elects not to join upfront, they just do not get service from the RTA? Is that how?
That's not the case, actually. And here's my RTA nerdism's coming. Sorry. Let me give you the example of Rafta. Rafta is Picking County, Eagle County, Towns of Assault, Carbondale, Aspen, Glenwood Springs, and Newcastle. I may have missed one in there. I apologize. Snowmass Village. Garfield County is not a member, but their workforce housing centers are really, as far as silt, rifle, parachute. They now, they have for years paid Rafta out of their general fund to offer the parachute to rifle service. That is really the workforce moving service, gets people all the way from parachute to Aspen. They do a general fund every year, so equal to what their contribution would have been if they were a full member. Rafta runs that service. If there's ever a budget downturn in Garfield County, couldn't fully fund that, Rafta does not have to provide that service. That would be up to the Rafta board, though. But guess what? Garfield County gives this a contribution equal to what they probably would have been. They don't get a seat on the board. Remember, it's an elected official from each jurisdiction that's a member. So they're paying for service, not getting a seat on the board. And that's kind of what's going on in Gypsum now, because they realize to make the new Eagle Valley system core transit work, Gypsum's got to be part of the solution. So it's tricky. Yeah, but you can, you can serve contractually, require funding from that entity to serve them, but one of the drawbacks is you don't, you don't get that representation on the board.
Thank you. About this at Mayors and Managers, we had asked, you know, one, because we already fund the Summit Stage with that 0.75% sales tax, so they, they would still continue to get the same amount of funding for whatever kind of transit they run there, but they wouldn't have a seat. And so they would, it would basically remain unchanged. So if there were benefits, they wouldn't see them.
Right. And real quick, just in Gypsum, for example, so Eagle County had an existing half penny sales tax for transportation. 90% went to transit, 10% to trails. One big promise that was made at the outset of that effort was because that 0.5 was existing, that if your community did not join the RTA, you would not lose any service, have any diminishment of service from that existing 0.5, because that was already in place. So there would be no punishment or anything if you didn't join. You would still have the, a level of service commensurate with that half penny. You might just not benefit from the next half penny.
All right. Any further questions? So we've had Bill present at Mayors and Managers, and he's already started the process as far as organizing electeds. And I was excited about being a part of this and figured that no one would really probably fight me for it. But if anybody wants to be the, the alternate, we can talk about that. So hopefully, you guys will support, just moving forward like that. Do we need any sort of a thumbs up or?
You do not. So we are hoping to bring you, to bring for your review an MOU at the next council meeting.
And are you presenting to all the councils? And have you done some already or?
This is the first one I've done, but I am being invited and getting those on the books, because if you've seen some of the news coverage, the final steps in Yampa Valley have been treacherous. So we just had some issues with the resort and their pledge, but those have been sorted out. So politics, you know? Yep, yep. So it's going, first Route County referred it to the ballot today. So, and Craig tonight, and then the rest will go in succession. So all resolved, but it took some meetings.
All right. Well, that sounds great. Thank you all three for being here to present. And I mean, I think this is going to be great, and I'm sure that this council is very supportive and excited about this.
Thank you.
You guys.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for your time. Thanks.
All right. We're moving on to Planning Commission decisions, which basically their discussion was about what we'll be talking about later. So just push right on through to Legislative Review, Council Bill Number 12, Series 2025, Ordinance Mending Town Code to Address Neighborhood Preservation Policy. Hi, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For first reading this evening, we'll have kind of Phase One of an ordinance to address some neighborhood preservation policy amendments. Really, the highlights with this is removing the ability to utilize negative points and the relative setbacks for single-family homes that do not feature a platted disturbance envelope outside of the conservation district, limiting positive points for duplex, single, or individual duplex lot and single-family lots, kind of across the board. And then amending Policy 33R in limiting positive points to one positive point for EV chargers. There was in that direction, we went with a little higher threshold of two or more EV chargers, based on, there was some direction for one, there was some direction that wasn't clear, it was just one positive point. And there's, I think Stephen threw out, two or more. So that is something, if you have any input on this afternoon, we can certainly amend that prior to. So that is something, if you have any input on this afternoon, we can certainly amend that prior to second reading. But with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions?
I think it's worth having just a pulse from Council on where we ended up as a discussion and, and felt with the positive points on the EV chargers. I know that we had gotten to a max of plus one, but I'm not sure if I, I understood correctly on Council's purview on whether that should be from the first EV charger or from the second. But we, we were united in the fact that plus one should be the limit and there should be more than that. And was just, would love to get some input and give Chris some input on that.
Thoughts on that?
And I think I was in favor of eliminating all positive points.
I like positive points for multiples. I was honestly thinking three or more, because I think a lot of residential is probably going to do two. Yeah, but I certainly would be comfortable with, with two or more. But I, I don't want to do one. I, I don't want to do a positive point just for one.
It's interesting. I think as we go towards electrification and there's a push towards that, incenting EVs is valuable, right? So I like the plus one. And I almost wonder if it should just be for every garage space you have or garage space plus one. So kind of just creating that environment where you can go electric, kind of encouraging that, so.
One per garage space, but I would want to add to that a minimum of two.
The, the one per garage space is a, is a very intriguing idea, but I would say the design that I'm seeing and clearly is the predominant design in Highlands is for there to be two garage spaces together and one someplace else. Like separated where I think the cost of the infrastructure of asking for a charger in each garage space would markedly go up for that kind of a design, which the architects seem to like. So I think that's when I thought about two. Usually there's two spaces together, two chargers right there, one set of infrastructure, but you're getting more than just a single space.
I liked one point for two chargers. I like the idea of the garage spaces, but then I start thinking about what if there is no garage? I don't know. I just, there's most likely going to be a garage. I get that. But I, I like one point for two spaces.
I do too.
As written.
As written. Are people okay with as written?
One, one for two as written.
One for two.
I'm good. I'd also, to Jay's point, like to touch on the landscaping. I know initially we started out zero. You know, remove all positive points. But it seemed like the last meeting, there was some discussion about potential benefits for one, you know, just to incent, you know, more robust landscaping in certain instances. And I'm a bit intrigued with that. Would love to hear what others think about that. I, I would want to set a higher threshold for, for a positive point than, than is in place now for one positive point. Maybe make one positive points for the threshold of three previously or something to that effect. But there are certain instances where it would be nice to have that incentive piece to get the landscaping we feel like the project needs.
So yeah, just to give you one quick background, just for context, we previously had two, four and six, although six, I don't know if you've ever utilized, but it was two and four. But we can look at, look at that, but just, just for the context of setting the table.
So I would do one point for maybe for, you know, what was before the middle. Go ahead, go ahead, Kelly. Sorry.
Well, I remember that conversation and I definitely was leaning towards having some, you know, incentive. But I have to say that when I read the language that's in here, I was pretty happy with it, thinking that, I mean, we get to approve the plan. It's already talked about layered landscape. I mean, I, I feel like the language is robust enough or is specific enough that it demands a pretty robust landscaping plan. So I feel pretty comfortable with the way it is. What I am concerned about is that we have had a lot of outreach that there should be more positive points. And we've pretty much just stripped a bunch and not brought any. And so I'm a little bit nervous about like, just moving forward with this without knowing we're going to bring some other positive points pretty quickly here.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the one that was kind of on, that we kind of are trying to facilitate is the building hardening. But kind of with the, some of the state mandates also that we're trying to work through, is trying to figure out exactly what we should be requiring. It's above and beyond the new state mandate. So it would have been a little bit simpler if we were kind of building on what we were already incentivizing. But, you know, I think we had a very productive work session that Cliff led for the Planning Commission. But it did, in that context, it did make it more complicated and as quick as we would have liked to be able to implement it.
And so that I'm excited about that Phase Two that is following immediately from there. That will incentivize bulk plane, that will bring in those positive points for hardening. And I think that, you know, what you wrote in there is very encouraging that there is maybe a carrot coming or there will be that balance that makes the building code work and what the plant, the planning process work of having a balance of positive and negative points. So I'm looking, I am looking forward to Phase Two. And I, I was curious to see, I didn't see in the minutes of where this was discussed with the Planning Commission, just wondering if you can give me a quick recap of, were they in support?
I think they were in general support. I think there's a lot of interest and support for building hardening and, and defensible space and all those avenues. But traditionally, there's also been some reluctance on some of the materials that are recommended for building hardening. You know, I think slowly, I mean, just with the, almost 20 years I've been involved in Planning Commission, it went from like a complete reluctance, we have to have everything wood to cementitious is okay, but other products were not there yet. I, I think that there's maybe some, they're slowly warming up to a certain extent, but there's still some guardedness in terms of, you know, some things I think at a staff level, we may be more open to just with, just how I, I guess our comfort with how it will both look and also perform if there were a wildfire.
So as you're moving forward with that Phase Two, I think it's super important that you guys work with Jesse and the environmental team, because there are just going to be a lot of things that we have to do to incent electrification in order to be successful with the agreement that we're going through right now. So as we've taken, you know, ratcheted down the EV chargers, hopefully we are backfilling with some positive points to still incentive, incentivize sick laughing electrification.
I will begin tomorrow with Jesse Hat.
Thank you.
Talked to her on other issues, so.
I, I think there's a real important step here where it's one, things that people want. And then two, things that are going to make the community look good. And everything I've heard so far, there's those positive points. Who knows if they'll get used? And I think we're, we're stepping into tricky ground here in my mind with reducing the opportunity for positive points. I understand the goal, but then the, the carrots on the other end, it's like, aren't hardened buildings as part of our new, you know, design aesthetic going forward? I don't know what the answer is there. Certainly from a fire perspective, it's nice if it works, but just careful, concerned about what we might be creating with these incentives.
I think, you know, just to back up a little bit, just in terms of the aesthetic, to a certain extent, there's certain types of buildings we've always had to use. Like for multi-story buildings, I believe over the third story, a lot of those hardened products are required by building code. So I think there was some discussion about like, well, for blending products in the meat, the state code, what's that going to look like? Is it to be kind of a disruptive or disjointed blend? And we pointed to like, well, that's kind of what we already are required to do on larger buildings. And most people are none the wiser when they look at that in terms of how that, that works. So I think we do have, based on that history, we do have some level of confidence that some of the building products that are out there will look good and do mimic and, and blend with the general mountain aesthetic that we're, I think striving for.
Chris, can you, sliding, sliding back to landscaping, can you remind me, is there already a requirement that if you remove a tree, you replace that tree?
Yeah, it, it's a little bit. I would say it's subjective. There's generally like, if you, let's say you remove a, a tree of a certain caliber, you have to replace it with the same amount of caliber. It may be over four trees if it's a really large mature tree. And then the individual have to work with staff to site those trees appropriately. But there, there is a little bit of a caveat. If it is something related to required defensible space, like if it's right up against a house and we're trying to clear that zone and there isn't a logical spot on the property or there's already significantly screened, that is the one caveat where you're not required to plant that back fully. And, and that's kind of evolved as, as you really have the, I wouldn't say competing goals, but joint goals of defensible space and adequate screening and landscaping.
All right. Are people comfortable with as written then? Yeah, ready to move forward, I guess.
I also, like Jay, I look forward to the discussion on what we can come up with for positive. And there's a lot of opportunities, like, like Kelly mentioned, electrification and.
I think the group that we're forming for bulk plane, they'll be kind of the second part of the task. I think, you know, initially we asked them if they'd be interested in bulk plane, but they also probably will have some input on what maybe we should look at for possible positive points, because they're all knowledgeable about the code and also probably what, what we're trying to strive to accomplish.
Great. Well, nice job, Chris. Thank you very much for bringing us this. I think we're ready to move forward.
Absolutely. I'll see you tonight.
All right, moving on to Managers' Report, Public Projects Update. Still working over there. I mean, it could snow any day. It's like.
For that cheerful introduction.
I thought there would be, I thought there would be a little termination dust this morning. I was surprised.
Yeah. The rain's making it for interesting conditions. I don't have anything to add to the memo. I'm happy to take questions and knowing that we'll be discussing Blue River's pathways twice later.
All right. We can move on? Great. We don't have mobility today or sustainability, so we're going to move right into the housing update. Hello, Lori.
Good afternoon. We did have some minutes in your packet. I'm just here if you have any questions in regard to those. Our meeting was, I think, last Tuesday, the, the 12th.
Great. Any questions for Lori on the minutes?
Lori, in the minutes, there's a reference to a letter that was sent to the owners of Staples Village about parking. Could you please share that with us, just so we know what the
Oh, sure.
communication is to residents and we stay consistent.
Sure. And, and I did go out there again. Might have been Thursday.
Lori, could you talk into the mic?
Sorry. I did go out there Thursday, met with a couple owners and walked through their situations. So it was good to see it firsthand.
Thanks for doing that.
I also, just on a side note with, with Stables, I, a friend of mine who's a contractor, who's, whose son bought a house out there. I had another friend doing inspection this week, and so I was picking his brain. What should they look for? And he, he sent back a text to comment basically saying, the staff's really on it. And he found a couple of paint blemishes and they had painters out there within an hour. And this is a very detail oriented contractor that I work with a lot. So it's quite a compliment.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Lori, on housing helps. Am I understanding correctly that you've, with the numbers that are in here, that there are 43 total housing help applications? Nineteen of those 43 had staff approval and nine of them actually went to closing and actually were completed. Oops, sorry. Thanks, Lori.
Sorry.
Yeah, no. So keep, keep going.
I, I want to make sure that those numbers are, that's, that's how it broke down, was that there were 43 applications, 19 of them, you guys said, yep, you get a green light. And then nine of them actually went through with it.
No, 19 actually went through. So we have closed 19 applications. Only nine of them are purchases. That might be where the numbers are getting confused.
So 10 of those were current owners who took advantage of it.
Right.
Wonderful. Thank you for that clarification. It's, it's helpful.
Yeah.
I just had one question in the wayside rental update that you gave verbally. What's going on at the wayside?
Wayside, we are going to continue to use that for transition housing, for town staff and county staff. There was some conversation a few months ago about opening it to the public. And there was a lot of concern about losing those units and not being able to run our routes and all of that sort of stuff. So we opted to continue to make those available to the Public Works and Transit and all of that for the winter. We are going back up to sort of full rent, which is just over 850, 875, something like that. But we talked quite a bit with Transit and Public Works about sort of managing expectations and how we deal with the tenants and make sure they understand what they're moving into and that they make the choice.
Lori, is that, has, has that ever been full? Hundred percent occupied?
Um, yeah, in the dead of winter, it, it's, it's very full. December, January, February. And then it really trails off quite a bit as you get into spring and all the, all through summer, very low occupancy. I think we did an overall occupancy calc. And if you look at it on a year round, I think it's full about 60% of the time. So it's not terrible, but it's not great if you're trying to cover your expenses.
Do you run it month to month? Is it month to month?
Yeah, yeah.
Regarding ADUs, you referenced Lincoln Park. You said, within Lincoln Park, we have a record of at least 16 of the homeowners that were eligible to build a bonus room, garage did so. How, 16 out of how many was that?
I just looked that up and we think that it's about 33 of the units of the 61. Or is it 62?
62, I think.
62 that were built in Lincoln Park were eligible for that bonus garage. So it's about 50%.
And there may be more, because the ones we have a record of are the ones that have actually come through and submitted their paperwork for sort of capital improvement credit. Sometimes people don't do that till they're ready to sell. So there may be others, but I think it's at least 50% of the eligible ones.
The Building Department have a record to, to get a better idea of?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could definitely check with the.
If you happen to have extra money on your time to ask, just, I think it'd be a great thing to know going further into this ADU conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to take on the ADU conversation. Then we're going to definitely need to be talking about that the, the next couple of months.
All right. Thank you both very much.
Thanks.
Been space? Luke's coming down for any questions?
Hello, Mayor and Council. The minutes on the August 12th BOSAC meeting are in your packet. Happy to take any questions on that or other open space items?
Questions?
I saw the Trails Crew on Betty's today doing a great job, as always. This isn't directly on the agenda, but I believe we have one more pedal to go.
Um, this isn't directly on the agenda, but I believe we have one more pedal together left. And, um, can you talk about the program? Just, I don't know if all the council members know what it is.
Yeah, it's been great. Uh, he jolavatas and deserves a lot of credit for coming up with the idea, but it, we've been offering free guided mountain bike clinics on Thursday nights, one month each summer. And, uh, Rich Bannock from Avalanche Sports has donated the bikes and we have some good instructors and we take all levels of mountain bikers, um, usually mostly on the beginner side from the North Avalanche Sports location on the rec path and on the River Trail and go through some basic mountain biking and just kind of introduce people that aren't familiar with mountain biking into the sport. And it's been a growing success. It's pretty cool. So September eighteenth is the, the final event. Yeah, it's been great.
I didn't know about that.
I've heard nothing but great things and thanks to you and the open space team, the, um, instructors and.
Yeah, you need to, it's been excellent help as well. But thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Duke.
Thank you.
All right, moving through, um, committee reports, we really just had the liquor and marijuana into financials. Pam, Tracy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have the report that covers the seven months of two thousand twenty-five. July is largely reflective of our June sales tax collections. Overall, we're approximately one point four ahead of our year-to-date budgeted revenues in the excise fund and behind four hundred thousand in comparison with our prior year. Sales tax is currently flat in comparison with our year-to-date budget and four hundred thousand behind, um, prior year. Accommodations tax is also flat in comparison with our year-to-date budget and two hundred thousand behind in comparison with prior year. Real estate transfer tax is ahead one point three of our year-to-date budget revenues and is ahead five hundred thousand in comparison with prior year real estate transfer tax. Our net taxable sales year-to-date June two thousand twenty-five are behind three percent in comparison with June of two thousand twenty-four. If you just look at June as a standalone month, we came behind three percent, seeing, um, declines in all categories except for a slight increase in retail. Retail in town was behind four point five three percent in the month of June of two thousand twenty-five in comparison with two thousand twenty-four. Retail out of town came ahead seven percent in comparison with prior year. Real estate transfer tax for the month of July came in strong. Um, you can see on the report that it was ahead by five, forty-five percent in comparison with July of twenty-four. Um, this is mainly, um, a few single-family homes at a higher price point, um, sales. And so again, single-family comprises of the majority of the sales, um, with timeshares coming in at a second place. I did add the report from the BTO where you can see June, um, was behind two thousand and eighty-three room nights and average daily rate came in ahead by seventeen dollars in comparison with, um, two thousand twenty-four key data. I'm happy to take any questions before I pass it on to Tracy.
Questions for Pam? Is that, yeah? Thanks, Pam. We're ready, Tracy.
Strength. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You have the July income statement in front of you. A couple of little changes from prior months, uh, just go through the highlights of the green column where you've got year-to-date to budget. The middle column now was the kind of back of napkin April forecast to budget where we had some, uh, intelligence going on at that time that has since changed from doing the level one, which is now in the yellow column. So since we've done the level one budget review, which is the data that you're seeing on that income statement, we have since done the review with Shannon and Scott. The level two budget book has since been issued with the five-year plan, which will be taken into consideration when we meet with you in the beginning of September to go through the CIP and the five-year pro forma. So there are some changes to the level one, um, already. Uh, nothing really that significant, but there are definitely some, uh, impacts to revenue and expenditures that you'll see there. Outside of that, uh, um, really stays stable. Open for questions.
Great tables. Any questions for Tracy on this? Okay, thank you very much. On the communications and community engagement update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I am just here to answer questions. The memo is in the packet. This is our, as a reminder, our monthly communications update for you all.
Thank you. Questions for Helen?
Well, we'll have a more robust discussion under priorities, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We will.
And then I did want to add that since Friday, when we sent out the announcement about Dark Sky, we've had a flurry of media activity that we'll report on, um, in next month's report as well.
Exciting.
To Julia for doing all of the interviews.
Thank you, Julia. I'm really glad that we deferred to you. All right, thanks, Ellen. Okay, lastly, manager's update.
So Mayor and Council, you had, um, four items that had been shared with you via email that we included in the packet so that the public would also have access to those items. Those were the events, um, overview and the events calendar. And then we thought it would be helpful for you all to have the AMI chart. So we talk about AMI all the time and if you don't have, even if you have the chart in front of you, it can be a little confusing. So we thought it would be helpful for you to have that as well as the tracking sheet that staff has been using over the years to show how AMI has changed. Uh, and then there was also a memo from Peyton, um, talking about the changes to how we're communicating or how we're sending you communications to council. Hopefully that is working a little bit better. We've pared down the information that's included in your, um, emails and then developed, um, thanks to Peyton and May and Julia, I believe, come up with a system where we can put the items that you receive into a SharePoint file so that you can go back at a later point and search. Because oftentimes you have things that come up two months later and you want to go back and kind of look at what you may. Um, we just wanted to kind of put out there what the changes are, ask if you have any feedback and what you're seeing so far, any changes you'd like us to make. And if you need any specific kind of help with navigating the system, let us know and we can set up one-on-ones.
Hope those save staff time from some of us that are always asking for things. Be able to search for ourselves.
And we're still happy to help.
All right. All good. Thank you for making those changes. Um, I think we can move into other, Blue River Pathway update. While we're setting up for this, I feel really bad that we didn't say thank you for all of the Dark Sky compliant, um, work that has been done for years and years, decade, over a decade. But especially this final push. I mean, Julia and others who've been a part of that, Helen's team in communications, that's been a big and pretty thankless push, but we thank you. We thank you very much. And hopefully we will get some fun media and you'll feel excited about it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, we're here today to review some of the projects we've been working on under the Blue River Pathways project. We're looking for council feedback on our signage proposed as well as the South Mill pedestrian connection.
All right, we can dive in and I'm going to try to not mess up the clicker. I promise it.
Oh, never should have said that.
There we go. All right, so we're going to start talking up about the Phase One Wayfinding signage. So our purpose was to assist rec path users as well as visitors navigating around town, especially within the River Rock corridor and getting to major destinations around town. And we want to do that especially to encourage people to bike and, um, be a pedestrian as opposed to getting back in their car and trying to park in front of their destination. Having them feel confident in where they're going and how far that would be to go would encourage them more to say, hey, I can actually bike here or hey, I can actually walk here and, and not get back in that car, which would reduce traffic congestion and those conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and bikes. For the process, the, the team has, you know, worked with the planning department, sustainability, transportation. We've coordinated with BTO, um, and even Trails to really create a cohesive design. And we have some options for you today to kind of go over, to discuss what we, what we, what those signs could look like. The core team also walked the site and kind of decided or have been looking at locations for where these signs would go and what the best locations could be. And we have mapping and a really fun spreadsheet that you guys probably wouldn't think is fun, but I'm a nerd, so I think it's fun. Of what all of those signs would say and arrow directions and things like that for those major destinations along the corridor. We even brought mockups with us to determine the size of the sign, to make sure that, A, the size of the sign is not too large, but large enough that the size of the text is easily readable from a far enough distance so that people on a bike could make the decision to turn or to stop when they're trying to navigate to whatever their major destination is. And then at the bottom, you can kind of see our project schedule and where we are today. All right, um, we're also, as part of this project, there's going to be some signage cleanup. As you can see, there's a lot of different signage that is up and along the pathway today. And so part of this project would be to, um, remove a lot of that, uh, signage and to make sure that we're having a cohesive signage system that's directing both pedestrians and bikes through town, um, really clearly and with cohesive branding. All right. And so as part of that collaboration that I mentioned earlier, um, meeting with Trails or discussing with them about the signage that they've been working on, as well as meeting with the BTO and looking at these really awesome graphics that they've been creating uh, and trying to make sure that we're incorporating everything so everything feels cohesive, along with looking at the new maps that will be replaced along, all along the corridor to make sure that the symbology that we're using is also matching what's going in those maps so that they're not seeing different signals, different symbols around town. And we're making sure that that message is being, um, distributed to visitors very clearly and consistently. All right, there are options. And I know you guys had these in the packet, but, um, we went through a few options of what these signs could look like, making sure that we, um, were referencing the signs that Trails are using by having a dark background, using, um, rec branding by using the color that you guys always use for blue and then also, um, making sure that your guys' symbol is on there. But then for the graphics, we have a few options. So, um, for a bitmap image background, that's the one all the way to the left. So we could do a bitmap image in the background and those could change throughout the trail based on where you are. And it could be different peaks based on where we are. It could be different historical images. It could be different landscapes depending on what destination you're nearby. So that is, you know, kind of a grade back bitmap image that we could lay in the background. And like I said, it could change as you go down the trail. And then we also looked at the graphics that the BTO created, which are really cool. And we are able to lay a lot of those in with the destinations and can also change those along the trail. So that's the Be Like Rec Fly Fisherman that you can see on option two A. And then we also have the Be Like Rec Main Street, um, like elevation at the bottom of option two B. And then the other option would be to just not have any graphic at the bottom or behind and to just have your blank sign to just be as simple and generic as possible, get your point across.
Go on input now. We're looking for input.
Let's start. I'll start with the, just general question, like, is this a mockup of a potential sign that would have all that information? Because, um, with all the designs, like, it does seem incredibly crowded to me, the lack of white space and it is wayfinding signage. It's pretty cramped and not obvious. So that's my initial thought I'm throwing out there.
Yeah, not every sign has every single line. But this, if we had a destination, like a lot of the destinations that are at intersections do have quite a bit of destinations on them.
I think if you want to minimize signs, then you have to deal with a little bit more crowded.
And the size we are going with is eleven by twenty, is that what?
Twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty?
Mm-hmm. It's, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big sign. Like you, you will be able to read it. We, we held it out. We walked, we, you know, walked back from it, made sure that you can read it from far away. And at that one, we had the bitmap one, which I think is probably the most, you know, graphically hard to read if you're going to be far away from it. So in my, just as a guide, if we were to not do that, when we were to do the, you know, the Be Like Rec graphics, I think those are most, like, more readable.
Destination on here, you would suggest we omit, just off the cuff?
I mean, I didn't look that closely at all of those. I know it's incredibly important to label the bathrooms, of course, and some of those other key areas. So that would just my initial comment. Like, if you look at all of them, just Main Street is right up against the border. I don't know if things are still going to be tweaked with the spacing of them.
Yeah, we absolutely could make sure that we drop that down a little bit. I think that we just want to, what we're really looking for is the, we want it to be blank, if we like the Be Like Rec graphics or if we like the idea of a bitmap image behind it that changes or things like that. But we absolutely can drop that down. Um, and the one thing that I think we, we want to make sure we do is we don't make the text too much smaller so that when you're farther away, especially when you're traveling on a bike and especially a visitor who doesn't know where they're going, can see that, oh, like, at least thirty feet away.
I think Carol has a great point, though. It's just a lot of words. It's not that, like, we necessarily need the, um, the words to be smaller. It's just a lot of words. So I do kind of hope that this is sort of, these signs with so many places are sort of used minimally. Like, you know, at the base of the gondola or like really send
Major.
Where you would actually be going all these places, like at the south end of Main Street, you probably don't need to know where the rec center is.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so I, hopefully this is kind of a worst case scenario over the name.
Yeah, yeah. Not every signage location has all of these. We, the reason why we put them all in the mockup is to make sure that we could fit it, pretty much, like where we needed to.
We hear you loud and clear to minimize.
Yeah.
Memo, though, did I read it correctly, that we may also add distances to some signs? So there could possibly be more units on the sign.
And, and we would make that in a smaller text, just in case, like, if somebody is going to want to know the distance, they're probably going to be stopped to read that distance. But, uh, for example, the sign that we are planning to have at the beginning of the trail, or I guess beginning or end of the trail, depending on your opinion, at South Park Avenue, that sign is bigger. So that is a bigger sign so that it's like very much highlighted that this is the beginning of the rec path and that one has the most distances on it. So that, that's understandable. But, um, for, to your point, um, the one sign that I'll give an example of is the sign that we have at like, at the most north side, like where the rec path intersects French. We have a couple of, you know, destinations on there that are actually pretty far, like the rec center or the River Park. And we want to make sure that the distances are on there because we don't want anybody thinking that it's not that far and they could just walk very easily with a stroller. Um, we want them to understand that it's far, but there's very minimal number of destinations on that sign. There's only like three or four.
Of the distance numbers. I think they're.
Okay, good.
Like, even on the county path, I, I know how far I am from home, but it's nice to be like, okay, so close.
Like, even on the county path, I, I know how far I am from home, but it's nice to be like, okay, so close. But because, I mean, I love the graphics, but because they're wayfinding, I'm leaning toward option three, just keeping it as clean as we can.
Right, yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
I like a little more pizzazz. Two A and two B look good to me. They're crisp. Little more excitement. I see your point, though.
Nice.
And I like how it ties into Be Like Rec, so.
You like what was last?
Two A and two B.
I like two A and two B myself. And I'm with Marika when I'm in a new town and I'm wondering where to go. How far am I from the rec center or these various places that I want to get to? One thing that just I thought about as I looked at it is maybe highlighting the thing that the sign happens to be closest to.
Okay.
You know, so you're, if I'm looking for the rec center and it's one of a whole bunch of things, but when I'm really close to it and it says rec center, it maybe uses a slightly bigger font.
Okay.
Or maybe Main Street should always be a slightly bigger font because a lot of people are looking for Main Street, wherever they get on the rec path. Those are just ideas I have, but I don't think those make or break any of the points. I like, I like the signs and I like a little bit of art on them and a little bit of the Be Like Rec stuff.
I'm generally with the guys at my end of the table, like, two A, two B. I wonder, and you're the expert, but I just throw out a thought. Can we, at least some of the time, abbreviate north and south with an N and an S?
We absolutely
Just to make them a little less busy. But I, no, I, I like them and, yeah, looks good.
River Park, is that the one next to Blue River Plaza or is that the one next to Blue Fifty Two?
Blue Fifty Two.
Blue Fifty Two.
So that's one of the ones I was considering putting the distance.
Yeah.
So families know. You, it's a little biking adventure. It's not a
You know, in having had the opportunity to work with open space on the, on the signage plan, I, I appreciate pictograms and understand their value. In, in this scenario, I, I wonder if they present the same value that they do in, like, kind of an open space and trails where we have a post that we're trying to put everything in. I, I understand that it crosses language barriers and does a lot of great communication in that way. Again, I understand these are just mockups and the restroom sign is, is huge. Definitely understand the value there. I don't know, you know, how much the parking or the cross-country skier or the park bench or the music note and those things, or the flower really add to the overall communication in, in a scenario like this. I also understand a lot of this is getting flushed out and you'll, you'll know when, what's appropriate and what's not. As far as the layouts, I, I do agree with Marika in the fact that cleaner and when we're trying to just convey information, cleaner's probably better. And how over time, and hopefully we don't have to redo these anytime soon, some of the images can age the signage as well, almost post-marketing it a different era even, as we've seen with some of the, the examples that you have from our current signs. And so I would, I would go towards option three.
Gotcha.
Agree with that side? I'll agree with this side. I agree it's wayfinding is the first and foremost purpose. I think cleaner is better, like, for me it'd be three, potentially two B just because it's so clean at the bottom there, but fine expert, so that's just my preference.
I really like the graphics. I think it's friendly and I think it really is consistent with what BTO is doing. So I like two A and two B. I do really agree with Jay about minimizing, like, you know, Alpine Garden and then having a flower seems really unnecessary. And maybe even the picnic benches. I totally think, like, the transit center showing that there's a gondola, bus and bathroom there is awesome. The gondola saying there's parking and a bathroom there, great. But like, the rec center, I mean, there's not just skiing at the rec center, so that's kind of, you know.
It's, it's just a running guide and it doesn't have skis, but maybe we should add skis. But, yeah, we, we absolutely
Like, the really, you know, maybe the ones that are the most useful for folks who aren't necessarily speaking English or, you know, or the restrooms, things that we get asked for all the time.
For sure.
We agree with those, but then the picnic benches I'm less excited about because I just think people can understand, it's a park. Yes, you can have a picnic there. I think that is something that people can do.
Okay, cool.
Love two A and B.
So I'm hearing remove picnic benches, music note and the, the garden image or symbol rather and keep
How do others feel about that?
I agree as simple as possible.
Yeah.
Bathrooms are important, but other ones called out.
Parking bathroom buses, gondola, great.
One, the info, okay, yeah, that was the one that was asked for because I know the BTO specifically was like, could we add the info?
Yeah, I think that's great.
We can do that.
Okay, next round of options.
Next round.
Marika has a question?
Oh, sorry.
It's four, though. Could be anyone, including Duke, maybe. I know. At some point, are the trail signs and our street signs all gonna look the same? Or are we just, like, is there no plan to make the pathway signs match what we're doing for trail signage?
We aren't planning to make them match.
Okay.
And we want to use consistent symbols. I do like the blue rules. One, I think that could cross over to the in-town path, but I think a lot of the other information doesn't really cross over.
For the rec path, yeah.
The rec path. So we wanted to be distinct, but
Okay.
In the same family.
And I think we want to make sure that we're like, this is the Riverwalk corridor and like, you're on the rec path in the Riverwalk corridor, so that's definitely separate.
But I think to Marika's point, maybe, like, are we gonna use the same blues? Are we gonna use the same fonts just to be consistent that way with?
Yes.
One other question, just I saw it's wonderful you're collaborating with BTO, Open Space and Trails. Have you reached out to our just outreach team to get their input? I mean, they work so much in outreach and communication just to get their gut reaction.
No, not yet, but we will.
Thank you.
And your, your next decision point, right? So another suggestion from BTO was to make sure that we're, you know, we're adding that, you know, branding throughout the trail, even if we don't have a wayfinding sign to just make sure that we're having that trail etiquette and just that share the path message throughout the rec path. So this was the suggestion that we wanted to explore and bring to you about having this along the path as well. So we have three options for what that could look like as well. And we're, we're happy to hear feedback on what these look like. We're, and we like lovingly named them Stream, Flow and Level, but we don't have to call them that. And we can also change them. Or combine them.
Or not use them at all.
Or not use them at all.
Alright, so should we just do a quick vote on who wants option one? Who wants option two? And who wants option three? Only even I voted? You guys are really bad at this.
I think, I think you need to ask if you don't want them at all.
I'm gonna be careful how many of them we have because we can, or it's easy to oversign. I get it, we want to share the path for sure. Just, I really want to be
I'm thinking like, like, key intersections.
Intersections.
Where they have a lot of wayfinding as well. And, and my, I guess to, to the voting was, I'm concerned that we're gonna have more signage than we currently do. And I am one that would very rarely seize a different side than where the tourism office guides. But I think on this one, I would prefer not to, at least to start without these signs and to give it some time and see if we need to brand the, the River Rec Path or if the branding is in not having signs and having openness and to, and to declutter. And one, you know, one of the things I wrote down was that the removal of signs is probably more important than the addition of them, of really trying to go minimalist as much as we can and using the low-hanging fruit just to clean up not only the signage but the, you know, the greater portions of it and let that be the beauty. And so that would, that would be my, my vote.
So let's do a new vote. Who does want to?
I asked a question first, or maybe make an observation. There's places that I envision where we are separating bikers and walkers in the Blue River pathway, right?
That's part of the intent with the projects moving forward. As currently configured, there are very few opportunities where we would guide bikes and pedestrians differently aside from around the Blue River Plaza.
To, to finish that thought, where I was headed is where once there might have been separate ways for bikes and pedestrians and now we've come to a place where they're gonna be together, then I definitely think now we're sharing the path so that people are clear on that. So maybe we don't want these signs everywhere, but we want them at critical points. And I think that's what I'm hearing.
I like the branding and kind of saying like, hey, we have this amazing thing along the river and kind of highlighting that. I like the share the pass, path message, and I like number two.
I'm a less signage guy. If we're gonna brand it with these, I would rather see it on the asphalt. On the path instead of a sign. I, I think there's too much clutter with the visual.
I love that. That's cool.
I like that idea.
It's break the idea. Who wants to vote?
Finally got the group to agree to it, the result.
Not think of that.
Long as it's One of the comments I've got about the pathways pilot program is what is happening to this paint every time we repaint and when it, when it fades? And so I think we would have to be careful that it is sustainable and doesn't affect the river or, you know, the absorption of that or as it fades away and we plow in that there isn't any adverse effects, but otherwise it'd be
Option two? Houses on the ground? Use sparingly.
Yeah. Okay.
Time to get into a debate about sign locations, but I want you to be considering it will phase this slowly. And if anyone wants to review the minutia of proposed locations, I am happy to do a field visit or bring it back to another work session. But I'm not gonna put them in all at once. I think that would be a little overwhelming for everyone, especially Jade.
And we, we, like I said, we did walk the site and we also made sure that we were adjusting locations to utilize poles that are already there as much as possible so that we're not increasing the amount of poles. If that's helpful.
We're getting rid of poles.
Like, yeah, at some locations, we will be getting rid of poles altogether, but like, some, for example, like light poles, if we can utilize those, so there's not an additional post.
Right.
We're gonna try to do that.
Hey, are we good on wayfinding? We wanted to do a quick check-in on our progression of the Sawmill Lot pedestrian connection, which brings us that east-west connection that's so important between the parking garage and Main Street. Sorry, Tori.
No, for sure. No, it's okay. So, yeah, so this is the graphic from the master plan and we were kind of asked to move this forward and take it into real life. So the next graphic you'll see is the, is the CAD, the DD set that we have been coordinating with planning as well as streets and parks and the maintenance crew to review with and make sure that we're gathering everyone's comments and we're making adjustments for snow storage and for maintenance and materiality and, and other suggestions for, you know, view and everything like that so that as moving forward, you know, everybody feels really good about the design. So this is, the one on the left is kind of a zoom in and on the one on the right, you're zooming out so you can kind of see the full pedestrian corridor for the Sawmill Connection from the bridge to the south gondola parking garage, over the rec path and then all the way to Main Street through the, what was the existing Wellington Lot and, and now will be our super fun Wellington Sawmill Connection.
And as we reviewed extensively during the master plan process, this does take over a space that was formerly parking. The Wellington Lot is a paid parking lot, eight AM to eight PM. It does allow some spillover for employee permits, but it's not generally used. It's generally parked out by paid, paid parking. Right now, according to rec park website, there's forty-five spaces in there. We would be losing twenty-one to do this pedestrian connection. Now, the land is all programmed, so if we're gonna make changes to promote pets and bikes, we are gonna have to make compromises on land use.
Shannon, how many spots are we losing in Sawmill?
None. We currently have that already implemented.
We always hate to lose parking, however. I really like this design. It, it's the natural path, as you recall, or if anyone wasn't with us when we were, I think we were touring the South Gondola parking structure. When you're up on that third floor, it is such a natural corridor that just, I, I really hope will draw people, you know, as we are able to get higher occupancies in the parking structure, hopefully that plaza will become, you know, used more and maybe animated a little bit and which will help draw people to Main Street, which has always been our goal, put traffic to Main Street. My question is, will there be a trolley stop? Does the trolley go down this section of Main? Does it go this far north?
There's a stop right there at the Theobald property that has the museum sign on it.
Okay, that might be something that we really want to help people understand so that it's easy, they realize it's easy to get all the way to the south end of town if they want.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, good.
I like that, adding in some wayfinding about the trolley here.
Yeah, I really like it.
I like it too, and I appreciate that it kind of, in my mind, narrows the gap there that I've always felt is kind of like just no man's land, especially in the, in the winter. And, yeah, it just kind of makes it a little cozier and quaint and, yeah, hopefully it works. And if it doesn't, then, yeah, kind of assess it. But I like getting folks to Main Street. I like the idea of having the trolley there, maybe even a little closer to kind of that spot. But, yeah, good work.
There's questions, comments?
Hey, I'm supportive of this. You know, I think that in a prioritized manner, there is other items that, from this discussion that I think some of us would like to see executed first. You know, as far as some of the cleanup of around the river, the erosion issues that were having by the professional building. And so just to put in context that this is, this is great and I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to explore and to get bids on and to look at. I don't want to lose sight of the things that are even more impactful at a lower cost, at a lower opportunity cost as well.
Joe, Jay, what else are you seeing as priorities other than the erosion next to the professional building? Because I agree with you, that one's first, should be first, because that's a, that could become more and more expensive if it continues.
And I think in addition to that is the general cleanup of the vegetation that's in, in, on the riverbanks and some of the overgrowth trash.
Bring the river more forward.
And we'll be talking, I think, in depth on those other projects at the budget, or two, I think, September ninth or tenth. And we'll be talking, I think, in depth on those other projects at the budget, or gee, I think it's September ninth or tenth. And I do have things like landscape cleanup on there. We're still carrying the professional bill building embankment project and the CIP. So. I think there's room for all of those, given the budgets we had set out. For the five year, but we can tackle shuffling priorities at the budget retreat for sure.
The snow melt fix back there?
Not currently.
Is what? I'm sorry?
Well, like the whole backside of the um garage or front side, the riverside of the garage. It has those stairs and then the snow melt doesn't work. And so we had to close that whole section.
It has, it has not been fixed yet, you said?
We haven't repaired it yet.
So there's a, there's some decisions that need to be made around fixing the snow melt and whether or not we want to do that. How a potential ten system could play into that. And so. We haven't made any decisions to fix or not fix anything right now. And this season it will be shoveled.
So you do have a plan to clear this now.
Well, that'll give us the taste of each. So that's. Yeah, and you give the staff the opportunity to price each and see, you know. Shannon, that's great to hear. You hope there's enough room in the budget for all of this because I, whereas I agree with Jay. You know, the. The erosion include landscape cleanup or or probably higher priorities. For me, this is the very next priority. This to this is one of my really high priorities. Just to, let's get people walking to Main Street.
It's interesting. I don't know if you saw the McCain um open space discussion, but the planner there did an incredible job kind of layering in. Not play structures, but kind of child engagement pieces that like kind of on the ground. Don't know if that'd be appropriate here, but might be worth a fit. It's fascinating to me that, you know, back when the racer's edge. Parking lot was transformed into a park. You know, that was a big debate. And I, every time I go by there, I'm always counting the number of folks and that's used a lot. And I think this space has. A similar type ability to just engage folks and. And yeah, maybe that's something we look at there, not necessarily play structures, but child engagement. Think it'll be a good space.
Yeah, and we can even note that for, we have a designated spot for possible public art. We can even note that is, that could also be a play element too.
Cool.
Marika, anything on this?
Nothing new.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Um, I. Wish that we didn't have to lose so many parking spaces. I think that this. The crossing of the Wellington Lot, it looks pretty wide and. I understand like some green space there would be nice and definitely to delineate that, but if there was a way to. Neck it down a little and lose fewer spots. I don't know if it would make any difference because we're still not going to be able to. Buy that looping, you know, to get in and out, but.
Know how we could fit any more in without getting rid of it all. Cause you need another drive aisle. So it'd be tricky.
And even if we skinny it up a little bit and gained a couple at the top, I mean, we're talking about like two spots, maybe.
I don't know what the, um, can I just throw out an idea just to take temperature? Um, I don't know what the plan is for the Schoonover Building s- location. But to me, that space has been really big. Um, it seems really big now that the building's not there. And I don't know if there's, I know that Wellington is used mostly for visitors and Sawmill is um mostly for employees. So it's not. Like a one for one, but we know we need more employee parking in Sawmill anyway. I don't know if. Over the long, I don't know what you're gonna do with that space and maybe there's a better use for it, but I would like. Maybe some parking to be considered in that spot if we don't have any other better thing. But I don't know. Todd's like, once it murder me.
We have lots of time to discuss that site. We haven't even started contemplating what redevelopment of it would look like. We've thrown it into the living lab scenario, like let's do the bike plaza, see how that space. You know, feels, it feels really large right now. It's nice. See how it's utilized, but. We're definitely always cognizant of making sure we're keeping employee parking whole to the best of our ability.
All right, that's all I want. Thank you.
Hey Shannon, no question. How is this? What would this look like in the winter? Like, where's the snow storage? Will this become like a tunnel? Like when, like when the snows, snow removals in the Wellington Lot, will that get built up and will the alley like? I guess how would this render in in March or February or March?
I think a lot of the green, we've been cognizant, talked a lot about snow stack. I think we do have enough green space where it's sort of that dotty hatch to accomplish a lot of snow storage. That doesn't give us the tunnel effect. I think we'd be plowing the main route on the sidewalk and then utilizing those half circles to also um have some snow stack. We're trying to make sure that's pervious so that we can absorb the runoff. And I imagine there will be some hauling out of this, like we do all our parking lots, so we don't have. Giant berms that are taking up parking spaces.
Great. So it would not be um, would not be heated?
No.
Thanks. Sorry.
That's all right. Okay, you guys have anything else?
That is all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nice work.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I think we'll get a quick five minute break and then come back for. Really exciting addressing road naming and project naming.
Just to be clear, the sustainability person.
Being memory. Really clearly.
Good afternoon, Town Council. Before you is um a discussion, a quick discussion regarding an MOU. Currently, and for several years, um there's an MOU whereby the county handles all the addressing. Um largely that's done so that there's consistency of addressing and not redundancies so that for emergency services, they don't go to the same. Gold Hill place that are mainly. Just why we do this. Um, the MOU before you, or at least for your review and discussion is basically to add the town of Keystone recently. Um, into that MOU so that we can also have that, have the county provide the same service there. So. That's the gist of what's before you. What we really are seeking is just a quick discussion and a head nod. Um, so that we could proceed with um that signature and moving forward the the change in the MOU.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Everyone good to incorporate Keystone into this and continue with our current. Pathway forward?
Sure.
Yep. Looks good. Thank you. All right, moving into Town Council priorities.
Um, so I'll just kick this off. Um, hopefully our. Staff members who will be reporting out on each of these priority areas are ready to go this afternoon. Um, as you recall, back at the retreat that you had in May, we did uh some exercises. Where we asked you to help us um understand what your priorities are. And our goal in doing that is to help shape our staff's work over the next, say, one to three years. And so you came up with, you know, we had a long list of of items, you prioritize those items, you came up with six-ish. That you wanted us to focus on. And so uh staff, particularly the senior senior leadership team and then some additional. Um, staff members who have expertise in particular areas. Have worked to come up with a plan for how we might try to. Reach those priorities, complete the work that you would like to see us do over that time period. Um, so what you have in the packet is the draft of a plan for each of the priorities. That you asked us to move forward on. What we're hoping to get out of the discussion today is are we headed in the right direction? So a representative, I will say, just to sort of set the stage. Each of these uh priorities were um, we selected essentially a champion or someone who had. Expertise in that particular area and then had additional team members hop on board to to lend support and participate. In coming up with what the plan uh would be. And so, you know, each of these probably had three or four. Five people that were involved in putting this together, but they've selected one spokesperson to come down and highlight. The um key points for each uh priority plan. And so. Again, we want your feedback. Are we headed in the right direction? What we're hoping not to do is to get too far in the weeds on any one of these things. Um, but really to try to keep this high level. Um, but we'd like, you know, whatever feedback that that you want to provide. So with that, Scott, did you have anything?
No.
To add?
We're gonna turn it over to Keely.
So Keely gets to to start us off talking about uh code enforcement.
I'm gonna sit here instead of going down in the front, if that's okay with all of you. Um, but good evening, council. I am the spokesperson for code enforcement. We had a number of really good meetings um about. How to, how to approach this and also about what we sort of think council's goal is with this particular item. This could mean a lot of different things. Um, I'm gonna keep this fairly high level, but I think the overall goal is to have. An enforcement system within the town that that functions, um both from a personnel standpoint and a um. A code standpoint, but that is also adaptive to council's priorities and to the community's needs. So the first thing that we're going to be doing is sort of polling each department to determine what their, you know, what's working for them, what's not, their enforcement needs. Um, how, how things are going for them and then to create a list of code amendments that. Will um help fix some of those issues. Um, and then we will also identify um. What strategies we want to be employing um with enforcement. Um, so in, as part of that conversation, we will be coming back to council frequently to talk about council priorities um. For enforcement and and I think the goal is to have, you know, first, we sort of need to have a way to do it. Right? So that's sort of the first step. And then we'll be talking about um. Or maybe multiple ways to do it. And then we'll be talking about how to prioritize and and how to successfully. Um, enforce without both, you know, we tend to go to one extreme or the other. We either. Come down too hard or we just sort of don't do anything and then things trail off. So I think we want to sort of. Tighten that up in a way that that um makes this whole thing slightly more efficient, but also more effective. Um, but still continues to create the welcoming atmosphere that we want to to have with the town. So that's sort of the high level overview. Of what we're looking at doing. Questions?
Some general questions, I guess, about all of these two, Shannon, just to make sure um. The objectives are not in any sort of priority order, correct?
Well, I, you did prioritize them, but we are looking at these. As things that we are working on all of them. So we're not saying that code enforcement is more important than e-delivery. We're working on them all. You did have some others that fell below. Sort of this threshold and as we complete these projects, we may start working on those, but these are not prioritized. In any particular order.
And then within the goals, the objectives and tactic. Okay, great.
I think just um operationally, like Keely said. We have to have a functioning system in order to do some of the other things. So in that way. There may be some prioritization within each of the um work plans.
Okay, great. And then um just another level setting thing with all these, I know it was council that um. Came up with these, but some of the objectives, like is that something like? Town staff has full buy-in on the objectives? I just want to make sure some of the items weren't. One council member said something and we don't have buy-in from town staff.
I think each group can could speak to that, but generally speaking, we've talked about it several times at SLT. I don't. I don't feel like we have anything on there that we don't believe in. The only thing I'll say is we also were coming at it from the perspective of. Here's what we think council as a group would like to see. So if we have come, like if we've gotten any of this wrong. We do want to know that, but I don't think any of it is a one person said this. And so we put it in there because of that, but we don't really believe in it.
Okay, great. Thanks for just setting the stage a little more.
Um, can I just say from. Sitting up here on and sort of discussing enforcement, I think that. Um, for a lot of us, the idea of enforcement just keeps sort of um. I, I don't know, it's always changing, which I know really leaves staff in a difficult position because we have a code. And like the first thing is a warning and the second thing is something different. And I think um from my perspective. I sort of want to check. I I'd love for um staff to check and make sure that we're not, just like you had just said, that we're not like. Overreacting at, you know, at step two that we're going in with police force. And it's like, wait, you left a trash can out. So it's like, you know, it makes sense. But then I also um, I do want to do everything we can for our business community to just treat them with. Like the highest level of respect. So when the language, even just for an email. You know, a standard email that you would send the first time they put out a sandwich board. I just really want to make sure that we're looking at that with a fresh um perspective and making sure that it's not. I mean, when you send something in an email and it's from the town of Breckenridge, it feels very serious. And so I just think we need to be very sensitive to that. We hear that a lot from our business community, you know. I put out a basket with three T-shirts and I got this really, and it's like, there was nothing wrong with the email, just told them they put the basket out. But I think. We, from the council's perspective, would like to. Know that we're sort of going above and beyond to give them the information. We're not asking to change the information, but that it's. In a way that is as collaborative and just, you know, nice as possible.
Yeah, I think that's great feedback. And I think that part of this whole process is going to be. Figuring out, you know, enforcement sort of covers this broad spectrum and and at the very start, the whole goal of enforcement, you know, with with a town code is compliance, right? It's not punishment. So how do we best educate? You know, and do that. But then also, how do we follow through so that when when those bad actors do come, because they do. Um, and there's always people that will try to, you know, worm their way through the system and try to get away with stuff. We need to make sure we have the ability to hold them accountable as well. So I think it encompasses that entire spectrum of activity. And that's really what I think we want to get a handle on and make sure that all of our. Staff has the tools that they need to do each of those parts, right?
That's great.
Mike, if I could layer, put another layer on top of it. This, this is probably the trickiest of all of them, the um code enforcement, the regulation. As as Kelly pointed out, it's. There, there can be inconsistent messages coming from council, which is very tough on staff. However, I think there needs to be an awareness of of changes within town. And changing priorities here at council. You know, your, your comments around small business are are great, Kelly. You're um, I, you know. We're, we're in a downturn now. And I think when a lot of the priorities. Were talked about and how important consistency of code enforcement was out there. Um, we hadn't really experienced it. We hadn't heard the angst from our business community that I feel like we're hearing now. I think there's some of us up here that would like to to see us. Explore ways to make it easier to run business in town, to expand business in town. Around sign code, around, you know, a lot of this stuff. So as, as things change. In our town and and priorities um on council might react. I think we might need to de-emphasize some code enforcement of our code around certain things. And, you know, and and frankly, uh bring to a higher priority others. I I would bring housing and code enforcement around our workforce, housing deed restrictions and such. You know, to me, that's, that's the highest priority to be very consistent and. And really enforce those deed restrictions carefully and and as as best we can because. You know, we need the housing. We desperately need the housing and there's bad actors in every area, right? And so, you know, you, we just, we, we want to not make it easy. You know, I'd always like to think, keep the honest people honest and, you know, we don't want to make it easy. I, I do think. You know, we asked, the council asked staff to to enforce Dark Sky and let's get the certification and congratulations, we have. It's great, but it's come with the toll. Um, I feel like from what I've heard and been cornered and. And heard lots of um. Almost to the point of heated conversation from citizens is this has been as divisive as our short term rental. is this has been as divisive as our short-term rental um, was. Um, I've experienced both, and um, I think the dark skies for the the community that I've heard from um, is equal to or or uh, or viewed more negatively. Um, so we need to be aware of that, and um, I don't think, I think we're too far down the road to dark sky to soften approach any. We just need to be aware of it. And um, you know, around code enforcement, around retail and signage, you know, I I I don't, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I I I would like to see as sooner as opposed to later um, talk about how we can make it easier to to run business in town and how to say yes to the business community more and and no less. And um, you know, and have a discussion around that and, you know, and if there is agreement up here to to have a work session around that piece, um, then maybe that is an area where we soften our approach a bit while we are having this discussion to discuss possible change. Um, so I I I think we need a layer of eh, yes, it needs to be very consistent, we need to support our staff, it's tough, enforcement is really tough. Um, and uh, we wanna support our staff with consistent messaging. However, I think we all in the room need to realize that um, you know, we 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 need to be a bit fluid in how we approach um, things because our communities are forever-changing. And um, you know, we changed the code to respond to it in the past and probably will continue to. So I don't know if I articulated that well or not, but um.
I think you did. I think, you know, just to, so that we other, we could spend hours talking about this, right? I mean, we really could. So I think, you know, our goal with with this particular priority is to get, you know, get some understanding of of where the town is at currently, where staff is at, where the code is at, things that we need to improve upon, we'll be coming back to you to have those very discussions that you're talking about. So I don't think, you know, we don't need direction on priorities today. We just need to know that if you guys are are good with um, sort of this general plan to move forward to to identify the areas where we do need direction and identify the areas where we can make improvements so that we have that full spectrum of of, you know, enforcement, which includes, you know, education, the softer approach, as well as the um, you know, the sort of bottom-line approach. That's our, that's the direction that we're proposing, and if you all are in agreement with that, then we'll be back to you with lots of different things.
No, I mean, all the areas have have the opportunity to be discussed. I would add um, you know, staff support and training around doing this.
That's in here too, yeah.
I would, I think these are all great. I love Objective 1.3, which as you talked about is education and enforcement, and I think having that strategy in place is isolated from any changing dynamics, it's just having that strategy. So um, I think all of these are great. I didn't see those in there, but I'm sure it's implied as you're going through town code so closely, if there's something that's not enforceable, if we just get rid of it.
Yeah. Good point, Carol.
I like that, Carol, and Dick, I certainly welcome an opportunity to to look at some of our code and fees and regulations and like, hey, what can we do to encourage good investment? Make sure that we're getting fresh businesses and and not stunting entities that may wanna come here but just can't figure it out and and make sure that we're getting that kind of good vibrancy with our our business community so that the brand stays fresh and relevant and current in the mountain space.
And I think if you just go back to the very beginning of this, town codes tend to be adopted piecemeal. Over time, things change. We've had some code adopted that was not built into the schematic of having the carrot all the way down to the stick. And as Carol points out, Carol, if we've got something that's in there that we're telling people to do, but we can't enforce it, well, what's the point of that? So I think as Keely's going through this, and that was my understanding of what we wanted to do, she's making sure that what we have on the books is enforceable, and then it's gonna be up to each branch and the the sort of philosophy of council, how strictly we enforce it. We have to have that tool. That's how I see it.
Spot on.
All right. Did you have anything?
Um, maybe revisit the metrics on uh, on that portion. I think that we could uh, look at something that um is is made more pliable than just not having negative con- consequences as being the metric.
Um, you're not wrong. It helps to have this feedback so that we know what we are actually striving for.
Okay, are we ready to move on to communications, community engagement?
Hi, I'm excited to talk to you about the Communications Council priority, which does actually fall squarely in my area, but we had a great team and we worked on this together. And what we're trying to do is take the, what you provided at the retreat and then um, kind of formulate some goals. So the first step was that we created what we consider to be kind of that mission statement, which is highlighted. Um, we did borrow from some other municipalities. So uh, we did some research, tried to see how other municipalities are approaching things. Um, we think that kind of encompasses what we're trying to do with these goals. And then for the goals, again, kind of higher level, um, the first goal, uh, creating new and different ways to deliver information and engage the community. We identified two objectives. Um, the regular reporting has already somewhat been implemented, but we do plan to um, expand that and make it better. We do have a new member to our team. We hope that will um, add a new perspective. And then um, constantly be analyzing kind of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then under goal two, um, that's an education-based goal, and the two objectives under that are specific to the civic education class that we have discussed in the past. Um, we already have taken some steps to create that and have started working with CMC. Um, and also as a trickle-down effect, the high school um, for the future, and you'll see that in another goal. And then um, also establish a community ambassador program kind of as the end result of the civic education course, and we think that can help reach some sec- sections of the community that we haven't reached before in a really um, in a less intimidating way than talking to town staff or even to council members. Um, goal three uh, focuses on partnerships between you all and the communications team, and we really felt like there was a need for um, some additional communications training. If you all wanted to do that, to be on camera, and then also to have a good working understanding of the way um, communications is approached by the town, and then be able to get some feedback on that level. And then goal four is a youth-focused um initiative. So a civic education class that would be part of high school classes. And again, we've already made the connections, and we do think that's possible to roll that out in um August of 2026, and then a youth council. And so I think it's important to keep in mind that the way we approached these goals was over the course of the next three years, because that was the direction we were working under. Um, so it won't happen all right away. Thank goodness, this is a lot. Um, but um, we have a good team already making some steps, and I think a lot of this is very different than what we've done in the past, which is pretty exciting, and I think um, allows for a lot of opportunity to engage with our community.
Great, thanks, Helen. Questions, comments?
Can start it off, um, I think a lot of the goals are are very admirable and um, are, they do an amazing job for our communications department. Following those, a couple of comments I had was, you know, developing trust within all the different departments uh of town to utilize communications. Um, and what what that could do is develop a consistent look and feel, a lot like our signage programs that uh, we were just talking about is that if a lot of, our communications from, whether it's rec or public works or um, wherever, open spaces, wherever it's coming from, has a branded look that we probably get better engagement and to bring in that trust with those departments, I think would be uh, would be a real win. Um, I also think that there is an opportunity to uh, use communications to develop task groups with things that we're struggling with or that we're talking about up here, which allows for community members to kind of dip their toe into public service without a long-term commitment and maybe even breed our new, you know, our new generation of leaders and the next people to sit up here by uh, by providing these finite periods where people can come in and uh, be part of something that is uh, of a finite term, but maybe of an issue that's passionate to them. And I could see that being really beneficial. And then lastly is just a focus on public relations, and whether it's using Handlebar or or uh, another uh, group to help um, figure out how to put out information the most effectively and the things that you talk about here of, you know, how, when, and where, and how often, I think could be very effective, but uh, I'm excited to watch this roll out over the next couple of years.
Good points, Jay. Thank you. And you'd be happy we did reach, or Lucy reached out to Handlebar for the Dark Sky, and we worked pretty closely with Carly to make sure all the information was out there to all the media, so they were awesome.
Of course, I used to work with Carly a long time ago.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, one point to add um, to Jay's first point about making sure um, we're having a system where other departments check in with our outreach team. I would just add that for our outside consultants that we so often work with for outreach from Cultural Master Plan, Open Space and Trails, that those outside consultants are reaching out to our communications team to um, solicit input and advice. Um, otherwise, I think all of these are wonderful. Over the next couple of years, I look forward to to them coming to life. Um, just one little note, I think I bet all of us would love to work more with communications to do a better job. I think um, just timing that you have, if it becomes a regular thing, it should be after election, so any potential new council members can benefit from that training. Good point, Carol.
You know?
Um, yeah, I agree with but everything that's been said, and great job, Ellen, this is really good. And I've seen communications, just in the time I've been up here, improved tremendously. It's a great job. It's it's been been really good. Um, I I also love, as Jay said, the breeding of new leaders, and and I like that is, as Carol said, of really, and this to me would be the department working with Shannon and um, Scott to 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 give our council member, new council members um, a more of an out uh, in onboarding program so that they come up to speed, you know. Just give them the tools and the information to come up to speed more quickly. It's, you know, I think we all joke, you're drinking out of a water hose for a long time when you first come up here. It's, uh, there's a lot to learn and still is, so. Um, and then finally, just, you know, to to Jay's point of consistency is it's just a very positive messaging. I think um, you know, our government on the national level is very divisive. And um, and I think our community's feeling on local level, they're hearing a lot of no's and a lot of regulations right now. And and so just just being aware of that and really bringing, you know, fun news and and positive news. We've got a lot of information that we need to get out that are more mechanical, and at times do. They are no's and regulations, but you know, that's part of the job. So mixing in a lot, as much as possible, positive messaging and and fun messaging. You know, we are a fun town, and we need to continue to be a fun town and encourage it and embrace it. So from tone and from a consistency standpoint. But yeah, no, you guys have done a great job.
Good point, Dick, and I think having a new member of our team who is very excited. Sorry, Jacob, throw you, throw you, and he said, look at all the things we can do and say that are fun about Breckenridge, and we all said, oh, great. It's good, it's really good, because you're right, I mean, we live, we live here for a reason, and that we have to remind people that there are really great things that we do. And I think um, so many governments focus on the rules and getting the information out, and they get away from the reasons why people wanna be in their communities, and that's something we've got to focus on again.
Well, we have a job to do.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, you're right, it's our brand is welcoming as well, so we wanna welcome our own citizens first and foremost.
Yeah.
All right, any final things on communications?
I just wanna say I think goal four is most important to me, that we get this next generation. And uh, as Dick said, you know, in the national sense, we are divided politically and people don't understand how it works. And I think the more that that kids can learn that they've got a voice too. I mean, every time we do something here that the kids come in, it's meaningful that we send them away, that government can listen to them, and they can make a difference. So to me, that's just really important that we pursue goal four. It's all important, but that's a good one.
Thank you.
All right. Great job. We love this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to workforce housing, I think, is that right?
This thing is heavy. Um, well, so um, it's great to be here. Um, you know, over the next three years, we really do wanna continue to work on the programs and the projects that you want us to be working on, and so um, it will help us allocate our time and our resources. So totally appreciate being here and um, getting your feedback on this. Um, Mark and Scott were my partners working on this one. Um, and we started with some of the sort of existing policy direction that's out there, and I went back and looked at the the vision plan, and really, that reminded me how important um, sort of maintaining diversity within our community, a place where families can live and work and play and raise their their families. Um, and so the vision plan was really all about that um, stay in a small town, a real town that has a diverse makeup, which, you know, it takes public intervention because the market would displace a lot of that. Um, and then the housing blueprint, um, it's only a few years old, but that created a lot of the strategies around how we implement that vision, and that's still our vision. But it was through, you know, the specific strategies from new construction and preservation programs, and then obviously partnerships, so we incentivize some private sector investment and leverage our local funds. Um, then it came into the management and maintenance of our existing units, um, deed restriction monitoring, because if we're not making sure the existing units are being used appropriately, then why should we keep adding more units? So um, the blueprint was really all about sort of more of the strategies of how we implement that initial vision plan. So um, with that, and we ended up with really three primary goals um, for the housing program. And I think the first goal is big picture, and it's, you know, we continue to provide a variety of housing price points and types of housing in the ever blue to efficiently serve our workforce and our community. And um, you know, we can do that through um, we have some objectives and a lot of tasks, but obviously, we're gonna have a variety of housing if we continue to increase the inventory, you know, through new construction and through preservation programs. Um, and I'm not gonna review the things we're already doing. I know you guys read this. If there's something we're already doing, um, it would probably be listed here, and we will continue to do it unless we hear it's not important. But some of the new things, you know, the land banking opportunities, I think we need to sort of really see what opportunities we have for land banking. It was such an important strategy um, when we started our program. And I do remember, well, I was, I sort of remember, but um, you know, we were land banking properties that were way outside the core of town. We thought they were way out there. Um, so we, you know, what we thought way back then, um, you know, is it evolves. So I think we have to be open to sort of, um, you know, how far do we go out when we talk about land banking? Um, the ADU incentive policy clearly is something that we need to do to make sure we have a variety of housing types and price points. Um, the rent-to-own, um, we think we have opportunities maybe there to sort of figure out how to get people into housing that meets their needs. So the, some of the specific tasks that we've identified, and um, obviously look forward to your comments. Um, and then, you know, we can add- And then, you know, we can add new inventory, but then we've got to make sure what's out there is continuing to serve um the workforce. And that means we do need to take care of it. We need to monitor it. Um we need to have a way to track it. We haven't need to have a way to sort it and and do reporting. And we do need a really good sort of communication engagement plan with the owners of deed restricted units. Cause you know, they hear from us once a year and um you know, we, when somebody buys a deed restricted unit, they are buying into a relationship with us. And um it's a two-way relationship. And I think there's a lot of information we could provide along the way that um would help them and be useful and interesting to them. Um if we don't want to just be contacting them once a year. So that's sort of creating that real relationship is important to us. Um make sure that we've got the maintenance policy implemented and then obviously impact the or evaluate the impacts of retirement over time. We know it's going to have an impact, probably not as significant an impact as some other places that lower climate. But um with um sort of retirement comes that opportunity for right sizing and making sure we have flexibility within the inventory um to move households around to so that the housing meets their needs. So right sizing is one that we specifically mentioned. The second goal, um you know, it's not just about having the inventory, it's that people can actually access our housing. I mean, I hear it all the time. I don't know where to start. I need housing. Where do I go? So even though we have produced a lot of housing and there's a lot of housing out there, there's so many people that just don't feel like they know where to even start. So you know, we have talked a lot about working with the Housing Authority and getting them up and running as our one stop um for information. So there's a lot of coordination that needs to happen to make them really the one stop. You know, the the website, obviously um we've been so busy sort of adding inventory. We we haven't spent as much time in terms of just tracking our information, tracking our data, putting it in a really uh a great format so people can understand it and see it and know. Um and we've been working recently with the Communication Department on that a lot and going to start rolling out some good information and data that helps people understand what's there, what's available, where do they start? Our third goal, which I also think is of an important one, is we have always been a leader in the field of workforce housing. And I think we want to continue to provide leadership um and be innovative and strategic in our program. So um I think, you know, there's several um objectives and tasks under that. Obviously, we need to update our plans. We need to know who we're not serving, um what are strategies to reach the folks we're not serving. I would love to understand more about the return on investment. This is a big program. The town puts a lot of uh resources into this program. What actually is the impact and the return on that? AMI, it's an issue. We've known it's an issue for a long time. And at some point, I think we do need to take it on and determine if there is a alternative metric that gives us a better idea of who we're serving and who we're not serving and what's the issues with the pricing. And then land banking outside of Upper Blue, something for us to consider as we start to think about. You know, we don't know what our program will look like 20 years from now, but I know um today it looks a lot different than we've ever anticipated it back in 2000. So we have to be very forward-thinking. So and then obviously with the Housing Department, we've got some staffing issues and some um changes that are going to be occurring over within the next three years. So we've got to get fully staffed. We've got to figure out a transition plan and make sure we have good staff to carry this through. So look forward to your comments.
Lori? Comments for Lori?
I'll jump in. I, every time I'm at like CAST or some other event or activity where there's other mountain towns and then we start talking about housing, those communities are just all blown away with the incredible work that your team and you've done through the years. And it's it it's cool to hear the enthusiasm and just kind of that steady drumbeat from you. And so just yeah, applaud your efforts there. It's it's awesome, right? Like the number of units and, you know, that you're still excited about kind of that next five-year plan. So super thankful that you have that enthusiasm day in and day out. And it gets, yeah, you're focused on getting units and and results and that's amazing. Yeah, I think everything you said makes a ton of sense. I love the idea of contemplating, you know, land banking uh additionally in the upper blue and then maybe, you know, outside of the upper blue. Happy to chat with you about that offline. Got some ideas that might help there. And I think it's going to be a steady, important goal, you know, that 47% getting as close to that as we can as we see kind of that second generation ski bum retire, leave the community that, you know, is in housing since 1970, whatever. So I think housing is going to continue to be so important because we're going to lose a lot of units of market rate to uh to just sale. So keep up the great work and thank you.
Thank you.
I just back and, oh, sorry, Steve. Uh I'll piggyback on on uh what Todd said and and echo it. Also want to appreciate those before us that sat up here and and bought the land to land bank. I know you encouraged some of that in your early years, Laurie. So you're part of that group. So very much. I'd love to see us that the five-year um dashboard that we created. I'd love to use it as kind of a scorecard to help us celebrate our successes because there are a ton. So so I would love to see us put in our accomplishments into that tool and then take it out another five years so that we actually have a 10-year dashboard that we can utilize to to look at successes and and areas to to focus on. So um the 47%, I think it's a great number, but is it still realistic? I I would like to see us revisit it and and to modify it to a more realistic number to to try to achieve. So that we have achievable goals. I think it's a great goal and and we need to have it have it achievable. And you know, the 39 or 34, whatever it is that people that live, you know, in in our homes is also a very important goal to revisit as well. So but great job. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine. I was going to second Todd, uh now second Todd and Dick on that. You know, I think the people who started this planning in 2020, in 2000 and working forward had good visions and it's important to me that now not only are we focused on providing bedrooms for employees, we're we're providing high-quality bedrooms with cutting-edge sustainability and using the things that are available to us. And when I talk to people that aren't from here, they are, you know, they're they're just, how can you do that? How can you do these net zero projects? How can you make this happen? As we, you guys are making it happen. And I think uh Dick is right. If we if we need to celebrate that in in looking at the metrics and saying, we made this plan and here's where we stand. And we want to extend it and continue to do it. The 47% it's a remarkable remarkable goal and just keep moving forward. But I don't have anything critical that I want to say about your presentation here. I think we are on top of this one.
Thank you.
I think this looks great. Thank you, Lori, and your team that came up with this. And thanks for coming to Social Equity Commission. And I think those are a lot of ideas that I was so glad you rolled into this plan too, supporting runners, looking at other auctions. So I think this is spot on and there's a lot involved in this. Yeah.
Just highlighting a couple of your um bullet points. I think enforcement is so huge and I think we talked about it a little bit earlier in the priorities and that with this amount of investment to make sure that that investment is is safely guarded. And understanding what the need is, again, with the the dollars that we're talking about with the investment and the amount of taxpayer money that go toward this um to understand that we are going after the correct product mix, uh buy versus rent, what size for each and that we're supporting the people that are are here now. And then lastly, um having those KPIs to understand where the, you know, what the percent occupancy is, what's our percent of workforce that lives in town in the Upper Blue Basin? And maybe even as we have to uh look out further, does that does that extend to South Park too? And to see like if we're able to keep those metrics just so that we're never, you know, firing blindly. That is always a very calculated uh investment. So but uh fantastic. Thank you.
Lori, I really appreciate how like you 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 said it, not me, that you have been doing this for a long time. And you still came up with like lots of really innovative tasks that we can improve on and having an ROI metric, looking at alternatives to AMI. Um I think I've told this story before, but when we were in California for a few years, I got a cold call from some housing group that said, hey, we hear you moved here from Breckenridge. Could you come help us? Explain to us how you did all of that workforce housing. So um you guys have done a remarkable job and I just appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Agreed. All been said.
Thank you.
Great job, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we on childcare?
Childcare.
Childcare it is.
Thank you. Um I'll be presenting on behalf of our group. It was John and Lori and Shannon and I. So our statement um is in your list uh form, but um really we want to preserve, protect and strengthen access to high-quality childcare by supporting our local providers, investing in our facility infrastructure, finding creative sol- solutions to fulfilling service needs and planning for a sustainable program overall. So to do that, we came up with uh four primaries. And the first goal uh is to find creative ways to add childcare spaces. And one is to look at in-home daycare incentives. Two is to explore potential code um requirement for childcare space to be provided in developments that maybe meet a third certain uh square footage threshold thresholds or employee generation um quantity. And the third is to continue the design work on adding a additional room at Little Red, which is underway right now. Um goal two is to stabilize and maintain our childcare center facility assets. We have um setting up methods to address the maintenance of aging infrastructure and centers such as our maintenance agreement that we brought before you and our regular maintenance checks out facilities we'll be doing. Uh stabilize and stabilize the historic Breckenford sorry. So again, this is the one to three-year plan for your council priorities. So this is kind of the timeframe we're looking at. Goal three is to provide for long-term future of affordable housing, uh sorry, affordable date childcare for our workforce. For number one, under that, we want to secure ownership of all the centers, have a consistent lease across the centers. So as our leases expire for the centers that we don't own, they are written to convert to the town's ownership. So we will have a consistent leases across the centers eventually. Uh secure and second, secure, stable, long-term funding for tuition assistance. And that has to do a little bit with strong futures as well. Um the fourth goal is to support the creation of a countywide uh singular waitlist uh for childcare. And um we've talked about some ways to do that and the ability to pull that out um at a town level um so that we can analyze that data, um which will assist in our monitoring the needs here in the town and assist us in future decision-making. And that is what I have for you.
Great. Thank you, Julia. Childcare comments? Go ahead, Todd.
I'll jump in. If you could get a one waitlist, that would be a home run and.
Well, that'd be a grand slam.
Yeah, right? So yeah, that's I I love kind of the layers of work here. And yeah, I think those are all great goals. And yeah, I think starting with the waitlist or or getting to the waitlist piece will be really valuable. So yeah, good work and it's important work and as important as housing. So thank you.
I think you knocked it uh out of the park on all these these lists of goals. We need data and there's your goal. The idea that we're taking over the maintenance of the childcare facilities we have right now is just so smart. Stay ahead of the game for the little ones and coming up with all the ideas possible to provide expanded resources for childcare. So it's all good.
Thanks.
Great list. Uh great to see it all so well organized and uh um echoed what these two said. I I also would, I just finding that sustainable, long-term funding is so important. And just that's got to be, you know, front of mind um all the time. Cause um the work that this program is doing is so critical to our workforce and to the sustainability of our community, you know, it's it the the families and the health of the families and and everything else. So huge, but great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, uh anything? Nothing new.
All right.
I'd encourage you, you know, I know that ever since um tuition assistance went kind of to ECO that uh we haven't been doing those uh group conversations. But to have semi-annual meetings with the executive directors of the facilities, I think just to stay on top of where they are at. And as new problems will creep up, uh that kind of cross those lines that we can get on top of those before they're they disturb, you know, the education of the littles.
Yeah, I know John's been having that and um we'll continue those. I would add to the list if there's support is to make sure, um one of our goals is we're continuing to support our successful after-school programs that I think are a key component of childcare and seeing how we can build upon those successes if there's opportunities.
That's a great one.
For sure.
Yeah, Carol, I think that one's so important when you think about our workforce. I mean, you think about the kids and I mean, the whole picture, right? But like the workforce and having great after-school and great summer programs and and that's just been such a, you know, a boon to our community that yeah, I love that idea of working harder on that.
We can add that. Thank you.
It's a great one. I would just really want to see that we spend most of our time and energy on existing spots. I know that there are, there's a huge reduction in enrollment this year in the school district. And so I just think even though we know we've got um a lot of people on the waitlist and I'm sure there are um lots and lots of infants that need care. I think I just want to make sure that we're very um targeted with any new spots that we're trying to get at any of the childcare centers. Because we're responsible for an awful lot of kids in care. And I think that's fantastic, but I'm really hoping that other areas in the community also rise to the occasion. And we really do the best for the spots we already have and um just stay focused on that responsibility. Thanks. Hey, Brecky Delivery. James and Jesse.
Good afternoon. Um I know we're running a little bit long here on time, so we'll.
Okay, so.
Okay, terrific. Um this this next one is is one that certainly um everyone here knows a little bit about. And we took our, an opportunity um to put the goals together. But before we get to there, I just wanted to just kind of make a call out that even though um my name and Jesse's name's listed as team members, it really extends quite a bit further that into public works. And so there's, it's been a very collaborative team effort to develop this program and hoping that we're on the right track and looking for a little bit of feedback. But um with that, I'm going to let Jesse kind of work through the goals that we've identified.
So I think the good news is is that the goals are not largely different from where we started with the pilot. And to situate it more broadly, you know, this is trying to address the the goal of from the Destination Management Plan and more boots and bikes in town. It ties into the Blue River Pathways project.
It ties into the Blue River Pathways project and sort of beautifying downtown core. It also ties into material management and greenhouse gas emissions reduction. So it really touches a lot of the different projects and goals that, um, we've set out, that you all have set out, um, to do in town. So with that, um, the three primary goals that we've used since the beginning of the pilot are really to improve the experience and safety for pedestrians, um, and bicyclists in and around the downtown core. The second is to reduce delivery truck traffic specifically, but also parking conflicts and to improve delivery efficiencies, um, of overall materials, but right now currently food and beverage in the downtown core. And then finally to reduce idle times and vehicle miles traveled of delivery trucks. Um, therefore improving local air quality and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So to that end, um, we've laid out a couple of different objectives. The first one related to, to the first goal is really to, actually it ties into the enforcement goal as well. So there's touches a lot here. Um, but really looking at how delivery trucks use our facilities today. Do we have enough facilities? Do we need to enforce them more? What do permit levels look like? Um, things like that. And then to really just understand the impact on the community as to whether or not they're seeing a community benefit. Cause at the end of the day, if there's no community benefit to this program, you know, then I think we've demonstrated that it touches a lot of the different goals, but does the community feel like that is, is them? Specifically around goal two, this is really about the longevity and the permanency of the project. This has been run so far as a pilot. It's in a temporary facility as we know. We are quickly coming up on the capacity of that facility. And so the objectives related to goal number two are really around extending the short-term lease of the temporary facility that we have. And then also, um, working towards that long-term permanent facility, um, as the redevelopment there at City Market happens. And then finally, the third, uh, doesn't want to turn. There we go. Related to the third goal, um, is, is just enhancing and making more efficient the, the program that we have today. So maximizing the space of the temporary facility, getting on board as many vendors as we can in a, in a logistically feasible and efficient manner. Um, and then also exploring the synergies with material management, cardboard back calling, potential compost additions, things like that in the downtown core. Um, all of this is the one to three-year timeframe, as Julia mentioned before. Um, with a special emphasis really on that goal number two and sort of the permanency of the facility. So I'll stop there for questions or James, if you have anything else?
Yeah, we'll take questions if, if there are any.
Great. Questions? E-delivery?
It's highlighting establishing a revenue model with this that, uh, offsets some of the costs, I think needs to be a priority.
Establishing what, Jay? I'm sorry.
Revenue model to offset some costs.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that we have identified and certainly have been working internally on, on developing. And there's, there'll absolutely be some decision points, you know, as, as we get to not only that discussion, but as we kind of learn, um, you know, as goal number two comes around for, for, um, hopefully opportunity. There'll be some decision point in that as well.
Anything else?
I think maybe looking at the community communication aspect a little bit. Um, I'm not sure how much the public really knows or understands about this. And we're putting money into it. We're spending their money for it. I think it's a good investment, but I think maybe communicating as we move forward and have to make a decision, permanent or abandon, how the public feels about it's going to be important when we decide to spend or not.
With Steve and love the idea of driving some revenue. Um, so yeah, great work overall. And it's cool to see how it's, it's come along and the feedback I get from all the restaurateurs is everybody loves it. I mean, it just changes their, their whole business, right? And then, and, and certainly helps them be ready for service for lunch or dinner much easier. And it's, it's been a game changer for restaurants and certainly makes the community better. So yeah, keep up the great work and try new stuff.
I can, oh, sorry. I, I just wanted to respond, um, about sort of that community benefit. And that is maybe the, the trickiest thing we're trying to figure out. But with an anecdote of sort of the broader community benefit, we had, we just did a doc tour with the national beverage, protein and beverage distributors who were trying to decide where to host their annual conference. And when they spoke with Beaver Run about whether or not Breckenridge had a major distribution center, the answer was no. Well, wait a minute. Actually, there's this new thing in town. And they brought the folks, um, who were kind of scoping and scouting for their upcoming annual conference to the facility. And because that association is looking to green their logistics from, and we're talking about like the Tysons of the world, right? So they're not delivering their actual product. They're, they're taking it to the logistics companies and the, the major distributors like US Foods. And then they're getting it out. Um, but because they're looking to green their operations, they, they thought that this was a perfect fit and they will be bringing their conference in September of 26th to Breckenridge. So how do you measure that community benefit? Is a bit of a challenge, um, and how do you track all of those decision points along the way? But I think that's a really good success story, um, to share about the project that might otherwise not be known to the general public. So.
That's huge. That's great. Um, another piece I was talking to, to someone, um, another restaurateur who was kind of trying to poo-poo it, um, and their perception was it was all about sustainability. Well, they, that's not their thing. So they were pooping and I, my, my point was that's, that's a piece of it, you know, we're reclaiming the river. That's how this started. We want a river back through the core of town. And they were able to get their head around that one. So yeah, the communication's huge. The partnership we've created with 106 West is huge. Um, you know, when Jay and I sat down with the team and, and 106 West talking about Shamrock, it was just like, it's, it's just, you know, the, the docs not picking up, it really can't be done. And, and Jay and I challenged them every which way we thought we could. And, and they came back and said, you know what? We think we can do it. It, that's a really important partnership that we want to continue to, and, and kudos to the staff for developing it and, and really, um, watching it flourish. So, um, so great job there. Let's keep going with that. And then the support of the restaurants, like Todd was saying, the food and beverage piece, it's, it's huge. Um, and as we figure out the funding to Jay's point, which is super important. You know, we need to just make sure it doesn't become a barrier to us, our, our small businesses. So there's the sweet spot somewhere. And thank goodness, there's other communities that have, uh, that are ahead of us on this one that we can learn from. So great job.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, last one, I think. Blue River Pathways.
Again, on this one, um, I'm gonna let Shannon go through this. And as council's been getting regular updates, some of this information will be seen familiar. But maybe just to back up to Dick's point about, you know, even e-delivery, it really was an offshoot of a lot of this bigger discussion of Blue River Pathways and materials management and all of these, other projects that we are kind of working concurrently with, um, not only this project, but now separately with e-delivery. So that'll turn it over, Shannon.
I don't think we need a ton of background about what this project is. Um, the first goal is for me, an easy one. And I think we can capture a lot of this during our CIP discussion that's coming up. While I'm hearing from council again and again, let's get those low-hanging fruit. Let's do those low-cost impactful things. I do want to caution that we still have to keep the larger projects moving forward. Um, I want to make sure that we're focusing on those with the design so that we're ready if there are dollars available with the next federal administration or otherwise. Um, that shovel-ready piece has always been important. And I want to make sure that we're staying focused on those alongside all the smaller ones.
And I thought they were just fun for you, all this stuff.
Fun would be one way to describe it. I, I enjoy it. Um, I've been working on this project a long time, even before it became a council priority. So it's really great to see the support to move things forward. Um, did you guys want to discuss that one at all? Or want me to run through them all?
Let's just go through them all and then.
The second goal is to review and update ordinances and development code. There's code lingering out there, I think, probably from the nineties about how to incentivize redevelopment of the corridor. I think we need to take a fresh look at that, understand what's there, understand how we want to shift it and either incentivize it or otherwise. Um, so that's a bit of a research project for me and other staff to find out where we want to take that piece. Sorry, my watch is ringing.
Kids need something.
They totally do. And then the third goal alongside noticing what the ordinance is and what sort of enforcement we have there is really bringing in the private property owners. So much of the Riverwalk is private property. It's there. Literally, we have easements to do what we're doing on there, but it's also really important to their businesses. So I think I heard from council to really focus on those partnerships and what we can do to entice them to cooperate. A lot of them decided front door, back door was a hard thing to do. So a lot of those back doors are now closed off. We're going back to the storage model and it's not as attractive and inviting as it could be. So what can we do to bring along those private property owners and get them excited about the project as well?
Love that. That, the final one?
I think we only have three goals. Number one is very lofty. So don't feel like we're not working hard just because we only have three.
I know. Anything additional?
I'd love to add, um, one, just thanks for the persistent and, and great work on this. I, I think I'm excited to see where it goes. It's, it's really cool to just see kind of the ideas that are already kind of bubbling up and, and investments getting made. So I think that's great. And then before Kelly, uh, paves over the schoon over, I'd love to see, um, I'd love to see, um, I was in Europe a few months ago and they had some of these like recessed, um, dumpster enclosures. It's like, could we do one of those in the living lab to experiment and see what's good, what's bad? How do you make it better? And then does that inform us for material management? And maybe making, like leaving the, the, the material management where it is, but putting it subterranean. And then you get the best of both worlds, like easy access to material management, but you get kind of your esplanade back. And you can park on it. Exactly.
The idea of using that space to experiment with concepts.
Yeah, go mess with something there. See what's good. Do a little learning. Thanks.
All right. Anything else for Blue River?
I'll just bring up one quick thing, cause I know we're running out of time. But, and this is mostly from a conversation I had with Dick, um, earlier in the week. But in this kind of place-making with Blue River Plaza, I've seen how to make that even more of a gathering space that has room for activation and that is a, you know, the heartbeat of town and how can we further that? That, uh, I, I, I took a lot from that conversation. I think it was worth mentioning.
All right. Great. Good work, you guys. I am shocked at how much work you have done on this in addition to all of your other real jobs. So thank you very much for keeping all the balls rolling as usual, everybody.
Thank you.
The, the team did a really great job.
Amazing.
Short amount of time.
Yeah.
We've got a few things to, to tweak and that's why we needed your feedback. But, um, I appreciate you giving kudos where it is deserved because they, they really worked hard on this. And, um, I think they're like, some of them said are excited about having this pathway. Um, and some, you know, a guiding work plan for us to use going forward where we can come back and show you how we've made measurable strides in what you're trying to achieve.
Yeah. No, this has been a lot of great work by staff.
All right. Um, we're a little bit behind, but I think we can do it still. So we're going to go into planning matters. We're going to start with the energy code.
We get today.
Welcome.
Hey, Mayor and Council and everyone. Hope we're all having a marvelous day. Thanks for having us. We're happy to be here, moving this new energy code adoption along with you. Quick announcement before we get started, we've got, uh, trending statewide catchphrase t-shirts available for purchase on the card table we've set up outside here. For, uh, fundraising, uh, for our code adoption after-party where we will be performing a new jingle I've written called Platform on a Platter, uh, set to Girlfriend in a Coma from the legendary emo band, The Smiths. It's a real sing-along. Don't start humming it. It will get stuck in your head. Uh, and I brought my, uh, energy code alchemist with me, Team ECH as we're known, turning code cold, uh, code coal into code gold. Uh, we're getting the capes made and a remake of the Saturday morning cartoon League of Justice where all the superheroes met and schemed in an imaginary town hall, just like this one. Now the team will each say hi and mention anything on their mind. Then we'll go straight to Q and A. Calling it Ask a Super Code Geek Hero What They Know. Jesse?
Hi. Yeah, and how do I follow that? Um, I just wanted to draw your attention to the memo, um, and the brief mention of Mountain Energy Project. And Dick, it was sort of a response to your question about, and really the discussion earlier today around incentivizing electrification and making the connection between the building code, making it easier for people to electrify and then helping to achieve the outcomes of the Mountain Energy Project. So, um, happy to answer more questions on that, but I did think that it was appropriate to connect the dots there.
Mayor and Council.
Hello, Shauna, Mosego, Mosego Code Group. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Glad to be a part of this program.
Great. Thank you guys for being here.
And on to Q and A. What you guys got?
All right. Any questions? Similar to what we saw last week or a couple of weeks ago, but a little bit of more information? Anything? Feel more comfortable?
Okay, it's ready for first reading?
I had a comment. I reached out to a contractor friend and just said, generally, what do you think? And, and his response was really positive to you guys. It, uh, it said, I, he was at some of the meetings and, uh, not sure if we could have all the final info in one place, if we have that yet to review. Um, nothing was too crazy that I saw, which is great. And then he went on to say, Rick in the building department did a really good job of trying to include builders and tradesmen for sure. So, uh, big kudos there.
Thank you.
They're our tribe. We try to circle them.
Yeah, it was noticed.
We can.
It was noticed by the community.
Nice.
Great job. Anything else? Ready to move this forward in two weeks because there is a timeline. So once we start, we need to, no, not tonight's timeline. I'm saying for this, the code.
I think the one thing that may have been different, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, is the, would be the effective date, which we proposed to push back to mid-January to align with the other ICC codes. Um, so that might've been a change from the previous.
From October.
Yeah.
Great.
That way.
And we did get approval from the Colorado Energy Office on their timeline to do that as well.
And kind of a thumbs up from Keely and Shauna who kind of know that so well, how it can be, uh, a tanglement. And if we don't do that, so.
Well, that sounds good. Sounds easier for everybody. So, all right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for moving this forward. Moving on to runway subdivision town project hearing, this is not the hearing. This is just your opportunity to ask questions about how we're going to move forward, right?
Process questions. Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. No songs from me about subdivision class, but happy to answer process questions.
All right.
See you tonight.
Sorry. I'm curious on, uh, track B. Um, I'm assuming that's basically phase one.
Well, we can't ask specific questions right now. Do you have a question about the process?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. But I did want to say that Sarah and Keely presented at CAS. But I did want to say that Sarah and Keely presented at CAST, um, and I just wanted to congratulate you guys. Did an awesome job as usual and lots of good feedback from the other communities.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to the runway subdivision discussion.
So this will be the runway pre-conveyance.
Pre-conveyance.
Work session item, but I think before we move into that, um, I have shared with you confidentially because we're still working on numbers, um, a few documents that will, they're in draft form, but they will, and they will become a quarterly report for you. Um, and we're still working out how we're going to report on vertical, that one's a little bit more difficult, but the horizontal is pretty easy for us. You have the GMP, which has been public, um, and then we, because we're approving invoices, we'll be able to, you know, essentially on a quarterly basis, say, okay, here's the invoices that have been received. Here's the, how it's, um, hit the budget, here's how much a budget is remaining, all those kinds of things. Um, this is a draft, we're going to be tweaking it as we go. Because some of the numbers are still confidential, if you want to talk about that reporting document, we will go into an exec session. So before we move forward, I just need to know if you'd like to discuss that draft and the format. If so, we'll, we'll move, if not, we'll, we'll move on with the conveyance discussion.
Are there questions? Discussion, I guess, either one.
I know it is a little bit hard when you're not seeing what the report will look like, so we may, you know, once we give you your first report, we can still make some tweaks once you start to see how it all lays out, but this is just general format.
Well, we see the, 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 all of the actual, I mean, I see this and we can talk about it and, but we see what everybody has a high confidence level in before we're asked to convey the land.
Yes, so you've got, um, you do have a little bit of a change to your vertical numbers this time around. We will present, if there are any changes, um, at the September ninth meeting, we will present those to you before you're asked to give a thumbs up on the conveyance. And I, I think, so if you guys are good with the report piece, at least in draft, we'll move on to the conveyance because I think Lori, um, and her, um, highlights and in her memo can maybe answer some of the questions you have on the conveyance piece of this discussion. So folks are good with that, we'll move on, okay?
Yeah, I mean, regarding the conveyance, um, you know, we will be back, um, with what we are calling the final budget, um, um, in, in January, but we do want to provide the conveyance earlier than that, we didn't want to wait all the way till January. So what the thought is, is we're going to come back September ninth with another report on where we think we are with the budget. Um, and, um, at your meeting on September ninth, um, talk to you about where we are with that current budget and request, um, formal approval to, um, convey the parcel. Um, and this, this will enable, um, on the developer to really start negotiating with the lenders and the, the financing and continue negotiating with the potential, um, vertical, um, pieces, um, to absolutely have the best price possible when we come back in, um, January and ask permission to approve the project to go forward. But we did want to convey the land, um, uh, right after your, um, next, um, meeting in September.
And I'll just highlight, it's in the memo, but just as a reminder, um, the conveyance of the land still does not allow for any encumbrances. So it's the opportunity for the developer, like Lori said, to work on fine tuning pricing with some, um, more certainty around that piece, but she's not allowed to encumber the property until you approve final pricing in January. So just, I know we spent a lot of time on that when we were working on the developer agreement, but I just wanted to highlight it again today.
I assume that September ninth meeting will be, part of it will be an exec session as we talk numbers? Great, thank you.
Yeah, but the, um, numbers, we're trying to keep the vertical numbers confidential while she's still negotiating. She'll be negotiating those numbers all the way into January.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, and I, I just to piggyback on what you said, Shannon, I read the developer agreement again, just because I needed to remind myself and, uh, I mean, everything Shannon says is fully accurate, but you know, I just really stress, you know, we're approving the conveyance of the land, the, you know, the land cannot be encumbered. Um, and we're not committing to pulling the trigger on vertical, that won't happen until January when we have a GMP. And, um, you know, so we will actually have a GMP in January, um, that the developer will be comfortable with guaranteeing, um, before we're asked to pull the trigger. And, and there are, um, you know, if we chose to vote no at that point, there's, there's, um, mechanisms in that developer agreement to get the land back, so.
Yep. Any questions? We, we left plenty of time, we thought we would have questions. Well, thank you, that's wonderful. Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And there, I will say, just there is a new small addition to the housing department, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, very exciting, very exciting.
Send her our congratulations.
Congratulations to her. I don't know.
Guess it does.
We're happy with that. Keely, how do you want to do executive session?
Um, we don't need it.
That was only for this.
So.
Do you want to go back and do anything else?
You can do your report outs and other matters and.
Great. Will do.
Ever else you might have for us?
Hey, well, I wasn't ready for that. Um, can we start with the report of the town manager?
Sure.
Great.
Okay, so if you haven't gotten this from Peyton, you will. Their very exciting tour at Scrap on September twenty-fifth from nine to eleven, they're going to do demos of their roto chipper, which actually does sound more interesting than when you know how it works, it pulls like nails out of pallets and then crushes up the pallets and does all these things that are, you know, I guess, kind of cool. So if you're interested in going over there on September twenty-fifth, um, they'll do a tour. Um, the CAST Housing Committee, or on behalf of the CAST Housing Committee, CAST has created and adopted a legislative position paper. We talked about this last year and it really hasn't changed. There, as you know, there are communities that are not as lucky as we are that don't have rep. And so there, there are three things that they would like, um, to support. One is a real estate transfer fee, uh, or the opportunity to have a real estate transfer fee in communities that don't already have rep. Um, the ability to have an empty homes tax and, uh, a S T R tax. And, um, anyway, I know we've talked about it before and there's not, we don't need real estate transfer tax and there's not a huge interest on the part of the council right now to do anything like an empty homes tax. We already have short-term lodging fee and, and we have money for housing. There are a lot of communities that do not. And so our endorsement of the legislative policy forecast would be really to support our partner communities who don't have the, um, revenue opportunities that we have and that are really trying to, um, find ways to increase the amount of money they have to create affordable workforce housing. So I wanted to mention that to you all and to see if you still support, um, endorsing this CAST housing legislative priority, um, document. I did float it by our legislative committee, which is Keely, Carol, Jesse, Kelly and myself. Um, and there's support from that group to, um, support, to support this policy document. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on it.
Shannon, I'd just say firstly, I do support that we support this. I think when there was an article in the Summit Daily or somewhere about this in the past and CAST was announcing these goals, uh, I probably had more hits on the empty house tax than anything so far this year. And we just want to be very careful to make sure that we're not indicating we're promoting empty house taxes here in Breckenridge, because I think people, uh, are really sensitive to that. And if we're talking about making our second homeowners feel welcomed and included, if we start talking about an empty house tax, it's going to get some negative feedback.
I agree. Does anybody have any concerns or are you supportive? Okay, great. Um, and we, there was a decision made, I think, earlier today that, um, with all the rain, we are going to be able to go, um, out of stage two restrictions into stage one restrictions. That would happen at, I guess, essentially midnight Friday morning. Um, so Derek will be working on a new proclamation with May and we'll get that to the mayor to sign, uh, in advance of that timeline, so just wanted to let you all know that and that is all I have.
Great. All right, report of the mayor and council members, um, we did have CAST last week that Todd and Shannon and I went to. Um, I think it was a good one. They definitely always talk about childcare and, you know, short-term rentals, which we, I think, continue to be a bit of a leader on, so always good to be part of that conversation. Um, like I said, Keely and Sarah did a great presentation on short-term rentals and had a lot of data, which I think is always really great for a presentation with CAST is when you can back it up with data. Makes it a lot better, more useful. So they did a great job. Um, what I thought was really interesting is that Estes Park has a car that drives around and somehow knows how many open spaces are in the parking lots and, um, puts that onto the, doesn't make any sense to me, seems like it needs to be a drone, but somehow a car does it. Um, anyway, I would just be really interested in knowing if people would support our parking staff looking into some of that technology that would, you know, be able to update the Breck Park, um, either Breck Park, um, app and then people would know where the free spaces are or, um, or just having more, you know, in the parking garage, how we have like how many empty spaces, you know, there might be just another technology that's similar to that. But some of the other towns have lots of small parking spaces or small parking lots around. And I know that in the past, when we've talked about how else can we do parking, that hasn't been something that we've favored, but it seems like it is happening in other communities. And so I'm curious if, if there's support to just look into maybe, maybe some technology and maybe we decide, yeah, there is the technology, but it doesn't work here. And maybe Matt's already got all that information to tell, tell us that, but I thought that was cool and something that we could consider looking at just with our, our parking woes these days.
I think before we take staff time doing that, we make sure that it's realistic. I mean, I, the driving around piece, to me, it's got to be more real time. You know, because if they're driving around all the different lots around to see where the vacant spots are, by the time they get through a lot, you know, it's, it, you know, it's gone, so.
Yeah, they don't drive through the lot, somehow it just, it must be expensive.
I mean, I would, I would, I'm supportive, but I want to give, I want to empower the staff to determine whether it's realistic early on before they spend a lot of time researching it.
I love the idea of having some more real-time data on parking, whether that's through drones or cameras or.
Whatever.
Whatever. Yeah, I think a little more real time and if that's in the app and even if there's some displays, that would be, I think, valuable to help town feels.
Was this positively received by the towns that are doing it?
I mean, Estes Park uses it and likes it, nobody else really talked about it. I was surprised that people didn't seem to care, they were really just like, yeah, that's out there.
And I, um, not sure what their technology is and it may be somewhat similar to what we have. They may be using it differently, so I think it's worth reaching out to them. Um, their reporting was very interesting, they're putting regular weekly parking lot counts and things up on their website. And so it, it also made me think that there are, you know, we may be more advanced than them in some areas and there is always something to learn from other communities, so it's worth reaching out to them and getting a better idea of what they're doing and what can we take from them to improve our parking situation and reporting and real-time information and all the things.
Yeah, agreed. I think their parking situation sounds like it's more desperate than ours and so they have really had to step it up. Rocky Mount, with Rocky Mountain right there. Um, so anyway, yeah, I think it would be awesome if you guys would support maybe Matt reaching out and talking to Estes Park guys and just finding out what they're doing, what works, what doesn't work. I think it'd be really cool to at least circle back on that. Um, and then I did want to say that Buell, was it?
Yeah, the Buell Foundation.
The Buell Foundation was also at CAST and they said they would be happy to apply for a grant for us to get the technology to have a child, one childcare list for Summit County. Thank you, that was a very appropriate.
It was Jason Colagary.
Yeah, and he seemed like, sure, no problem, we'd love to do that.
He was like just wanting to give money away.
So, um,
It's awesome.
I don't know how else to start that besides saying that here.
Yeah.
Um, anything else that you found very interesting in that meeting? Those were the, I mean, a lot went on, but those were my two highlights. Oh, the, one other thing was that, um, they've had some, I, who had the ballot initiative that was successful? I can't remember right now, but, um, there was a pretty significant, like a big ballot, a big request for a tax and they said that the ballot initiative that was, um, most successful, um, had tons and tons of testimonials. And so I think we should, I'll go back in my notes and look more closely about who that was. It was, um, something that just really reminded me of Strong Futures and when, you know, with, I mean, we're relying on that money in a number of different places and definitely intuition assistance these days. And so I just think if we can all help, um, put out some of those testimonials and so I am going to bring that up at mayors and managers, but I did think that was really interesting that the thing that seems to work, you know, is providing that information through testimonials, so.
When do we think that's going to the ballot?
They're talking about twenty twenty-six, even though it doesn't sunset until twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. So that's just information for us to contemplate. Anything else, Shannon, or that's good?
No, I missed the Friday piece, so nothing else from Thursday for sure.
Okay. All right, moving on to open space.
Uh, we had a meeting last Monday, uh, eight days ago. Um, Craig, Carrie and Laura from, uh, T H K and E R O and C D R, uh, presented and, uh, did a really great job on the McCain Trails Plan and kind of what that looks like. Um, they did an environmental, uh, assessment and that was from Carrie from E R O. Talked a lot about seeing raptor activity, which, uh, large birds. And, um, and, and talking about like failing vegetation on, on some of the areas, the decrease in wildlife and some, uh, social trails developing already and talking about the need for, um, providing access on that area. Um, they really, they. They really, they, they heard that they want us to protect the, the west side of the river. And really talking about amenities and access when it comes to walking and biking and fishing. Those were like the activities that were most commented on when Laura from CDR did the communications piece of this. Some of their priorities is buffering from snow, snow storage and parking. And talked about what are some creative avenues for the bike path and the future of the bike path? And does it, does it go off of the road? If it, if it does, is that something that can be, would the road be as wide as it is? Is that something that can be used for skier parking in the winter when it's not being used for a bike path? And how does that integrate with, you know, our cross-country skiing and what is, what's currently groomed? So I thought that was a really great conversation that's had, and they'll be presenting to council shortly. The other parts that they really talked about was, that, that struck a lot of people on BOSAC was their discovery play, meaning no playground, you know, to what Todd was talking about earlier, but having just areas that are just natural and attract kids to, to explore and to, to, to discover, a wildflower area and what that might look like. And then really embracing natural shade structures versus manufactured shade structures. So all that was super interesting and exciting. We talked about the, the STRAP Plan was, which is the Southern Ten Mile Recreation Access Plan. This is, as Duke told me, is also known as the Volpe Plan and the CHNMP Plan. And so they're all the same, but it really is about looking at how to, how to engage with our new, our new national monument and, you know, how to ensure that these trailheads are maintained and that are appropriate for the visitation that they get. We'll be attending the Starburst Award over by Quandary Trailhead tomorrow, and so that'll be exciting and seeing the, the grant and, and being there for that with the county as well as the Forest Service. And that was, that was, that was a lot. I did want a quick shout out that BOSAC did recommend approval of the Copper Canyon Trail. Trail, it's about a three-quarters mile. We did do a site visit prior to the meeting, and after a site visit, we were unanimous. So congratulations, you know, thanks to Todd for kind of bringing that up and having that be one of his recommendations. What we got?
Great, thanks. Tourism office?
We're meeting Thursday.
History?
We meet in September, but a quick little update on the Number Nine train. Our long-term loan from History Colorado, it expires this year. The Mayor Pro Tem and some of the board members from Breck History were able to get a two-year extension on that. I think Breck History is looking for, I guess, approval from council that we're good with the extension. Basically, just normal budgeting maintenance obligations as part of that. And then Breck History is looking to make Number Nine a permanent display here, so stay tuned for a future ask.
Yeah, just to add to that, the, the two years are intended to continue discussions around making it a permanent display. So it's not just an extension as is. They, they recognize that we really want it permanently here. And we, we need time to negotiate that, explore that, and see what it looks like, so.
Well, good work. Good work to Breck History.
That was quite a team with Peter and Jerry and, and Larissa.
A lot of heavy hitters. Anything else? Okay, Breck Creative Arts?
Breck Create had the Spark event. Over 11,500 people registered for the event. And that was not necessarily reflective of attendance, because I don't think they realized this upfront, but the registration process did not provide any Spanish-language assistance in doing the registration. And so that was an expected, I think, limitation. But by all reports, and I hope everybody saw it, it was really interesting, and I think it's gotten a ton of, a ton of publicity. During the week of BIFSA, there were nine main stage performances. Six of them were sold out, one was canceled, so two of the events didn't sell out, but they were actively attended. Everybody seemed to think it was positive. We have a meeting coming up.
And the marble thing is cool.
And if I can mention, just a quick shout out to Flor and the team on the Spanish-language outreach. I know Flor and the outreach team did an incredible job really getting the word out. The intention was that putting out the message to Spanish speakers that there's no need to register. And I think some really innovative strategies were used with using not only the existing channels we have, but working with some national and local influencers. So I heard anecdotally from all sorts of folks, that he heard a lot of Spanish speakers, a lot of other languages. I think the word really got out, so thank you Flor and the team.
Great, yes, and, and Tamara said that it was invaluable in getting the word out to the Spanish community without being able to do it at the registration process.
Great job, Flor.
Steve, do you know if we're committed to additional shows with Spark in future years at this point?
It's in discussion, I understand, that they, if we want them back.
But we're not obligated.
Obligated, we have no obligation for future performances, but they felt very welcomed by the community and thought it was a very positive way to introduce this in the United States.
All right, thank you. Social Equity?
We did have a meeting last week. First, we got a much-needed refresher from Keely on just basic town structure, the ordinance that established the commission, and just a review of all those very important formalities that are part of a government commission. So that was really helpful. And then Lori came again to the commission to talk about housing. I mean, thank you again, Lori. I think, again, it was a really beneficial conversation. Commissioners had some good input, and again, thanks to Lori that made it very clear that town heard the commission loud and clear, and their input on price points, other aspects are taken into consideration, not just for the runway, but for other upcoming future projects. So that was another really great discussion. And otherwise, we have two spots that are currently open. So we pushed out that information, and I think folks have to apply. And we'll have a new, at least one new commissioner.
We've had so many good applicants for those. Okay, Arts and Cultural Master Plan Steering Committee?
Current insights has kind of, I think they've completed their focus groups and have had great attendance and are excited to be putting together the report for, for our review. It's moving along nicely.
Great, it's a great update. All right, any other matters?
I have just one quick one. I think this week was our last airstage afrae, but I think some community members are a little confused that the farmers market will be going on until the end of September. So we can support that message and let folks know that the farmers market is happening through September. That'd be great.
I'd love to see BCA continue some music, whether it's acoustic or whatever. And that's just been a lovely pairing, and those two should be lined up, in my opinion, and should be a pretty light investment to have something successful there to make sure the farmers market has continued engagement.
For this year.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, for this year.
Be great.
Hopefully for Thursday.
I like it.
Phil, I had one thing. You know, as we proceed with this McCain Recreation Plan, as we start just encouraging people to park on there for free skier parking, I think it's a, now is the time to discuss the name. The Open Space Advisory Committee has talked a lot about the fact of not letting just the prior owner be, you know, the namesake for that, but to actually have a thoughtful process for what that parcel's going to be known as moving forward, especially as there's going to be signage being made up and being referred to and, and everything. So just wanted to put that on your guys' radar, that, that I think that's something that needs to happen sooner than later, and would love, would love feedback on that.
I'm supportive of figuring out a different name, or at least exploring it, and... Question, you, you mentioned there's been vegetation degradation on that area. Is it, how extensive is that?
They noticed some basic weeds on the north and south side of the river. So on the far ends, and then just, and let's see, my notes.
Started in 1860? I was making a joke about the, the rocks, the mining.
No, no, but it was just, it was part of their environmental assessment. And I, I think it's just things to be, be conscious of.
Duke, do you want to come and add to this?
Thanks, Duke.
No problem. Yeah, that was just ERO, it was more in reference to some social trails developing along the river. We now have a buck and rail fence closing the entire perimeter of the open space. But they, but they were using this as a reference point to this is where people are going to want to go. So how do we program access to these locations? It's not any significant degradation.
Right, good news.
Duke, I had a question I was going to ask. Has the Silver Shekel HOA been involved to any real extent yet?
They've been contacted, and we had two, as soon as the Silver Shekel come to our open house the other night last week, and they, they said they heard about it through their HOA. So they've gotten the message of, you know, engagement hasn't been robust, but they've been involved.
And so are you, is BOSAC starting the naming process, or what needs to happen for that?
I think we're looking for direction on that, but I, I mean, I heard from Jay.
Chris is coming.
I think the initial recommendation was actually to have it as a goal of the plan to partake, you know, kind of for future management, and like an exploration or renaming process. But we, with the timing of this, we didn't want that to be a distraction from actually and kind of overwhelm the, the planning for this parcel. Because it's the kind of thing I think we could get really quickly where that is the big issue versus planning for the actual programming and management of the sites. We wanted it to be highlighted as, as like a future consideration and probably a timely one, but not to be something that's to take away from our consultants while we're, we have them engaged in the actual planning process. That, that was staff's recommendation, but obviously we will defer to the council and the open space if, if you would like to see it as part of this initial planning.
Guess the signs will just say free parking.
Both parking.
I don't know, okay. Well, you guys let us know what you need from us.
Okay.
We're all interested in seeing the naming process at least contemplated a bit. So whatever timeline is most appropriate, I think we're fine to let you guys figure on it.
Understood.
Other matters?
No, no. Anything? You done? Anything else, I think you're done.
Okay.
Don't know if dinner's here yet. We'll find out. It probably is, so.
All right.
Leisure.
We're adjourned till seven.
Thanks, guys.
Very official.
Two things today.
All right, the town is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Town Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, August 26th, to order. Roll call, please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Errol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Approval of the minutes, Town Council minutes for August 12th, any changes, additions? Minutes stand, approval of the agenda?
No changes.
All right, the agenda stands. We're now into Communications to Council. This is an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items only. So if you're here to speak about the public hearing, then you can wait until that public hearing time, public comment time. Any non-agenda items only, you'll have a three-minute time limit, please. Seeing none, public comment is closed. We will move into new business. First reading of Council Bill's, Council Bill Number 12, Series 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending policies at 9A placement of structures, 9R placement of structures, 22R landscaping, and 33R energy conservation of the development code. Chris?
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Kulik, Assistant Community Development Director, for the record. Tonight at first reading, for your consideration, we have a bill that would strengthen our neighborhood preservation provisions within our code, specifically amending our setbacks related to single-family homes that do not feature plat of disturbance envelopes and are outside the conservation district. Also, eliminating positive points for landscaping for individual, single-family lots and duplex lots, as well as limiting positive points related to electric vehicle chargers. Be happy, we've, we've gone through a fairly extensive public process in, in making these recommendations. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for staff on this?
Chris, this is going to be, this is Phase One, and then you have Phase Two that we'll be expecting shortly, that will have some positive point opportunities.
Absolutely, that's what we're, we're currently working on, both additional kind of low-level positive point opportunities, as well as looking at, I guess, design prescriptions related to kind of ridge lines within, within the NPP neighborhoods. We anticipate bringing that back for a work session this fall.
Thank you.
It's clear the amendment does not totally remove the ability to get at least one positive point for EV chargers.
First reading, we have not amended it, but we will for second reading. That's a good clarification, Steve. We will, Keely and I will work together to take your feedback from the earlier work session and have that prepared for second reading in two weeks.
And the landscaping elimination of points does not apply to multi-unit developments?
It's not, we, as written now, it's only to individual, single-family and duplex lots. It would allow, if you had a planned, single-family neighborhood, something like the shores or, or a development where it's contemplated, to get points for entire neighborhoods planning. But for individual lots, as written, it eliminates that possibility. But again, to Steve's point... But again, to Steve's point, based on feedback, we'll go in and retool it a bit before second reading.
So Chris, I was under the impression after the conversation earlier that we were sticking with the plus one point for two, oh, two or more, um, EV chargers. Is that still the case?
That's, that's my understanding that for policy thirty-three R, we won't anticipate any changes between, uh, the two readings. It's, it's really only related to, uh, policy twenty-two R, which is associated with landscaping. It will work at revising based on comment.
Are we revising that one? Okay.
I didn't think we were revising anything.
Well, I, I thought they, they wanted the opportunity for an abnormal amount of positive points for landscaping after the discussion.
I don't think that carried. That was just an idea we talked about and I didn't, I don't think there was a majority of us that agreed to that.
Okay. No, then, then I guess we'll anticipate proceeding with, uh, essentially the same provisions at the next meeting. That, that's helpful.
Everyone all right with that?
I think we all agreed that the language in the proposed ordinance is robust enough that we're going to still have excellent landscaping without points.
Yep. Okay. That's great.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other comments for staff? Any comments from the public on council bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Oh, public comments closed. Sorry.
I move that we pass council bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Council member Rankin.
No.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Gerard. Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. We have no resolutions tonight. We're going to go into planning matters. Um, planning commission decisions. Planning commission decision stand. We are going to move into the runway subdivision town project hearing. Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, tonight before you for town project public hearing, we have the runway, um, subdivision. This is at fifty-one fraction road. And I'm Sarah Crump, senior planner for the town. For the record, I don't know if I mentioned that. Um, this is a re-subdivision of two existing town-owned parcels. Currently those are tract A of fraction subdivision and tract C of block eleven Breckenridge Airport subdivision. This re-subdivision creating runway, um, is pursuant to the master plan, which your body approved May thirteenth of this year earlier. This will again create, um, five new tracks, A through E, dedicate the public roadway Floridora Drive, which will be an extension of the existing public Floridora Drive. Um, I want to point out that tract E, um, on the master plan was dedicated for municipal and governmental purposes such as snow storage. And that tract E will, um, be maintained for those governmental uses. And this is really a formality so that we can, once approved by council, convey the property to the developer when that's appropriate. Um, I think it was previously going to be a question, so I'll just go ahead and lay it out. Tract C, D and B are part of the phase one of the project, which would be part of the first conveyance. Um, some other changes with this replat, the, um, Breckenridge sanitation easement on there, that's fifty feet, that was previously renegotiated to be a smaller easement. So it was not as much of an encumbrance on the lot for the future development. Um, the planning commission had a hearing on this project on August nineteenth and recommended that this body approve the re-subdivision. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, regarding this re-subdivision if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for staff on this?
Does this subdivision give us the ability to adjust the speed at which phases are accomplished?
I think, um, that would be a kind of a separate conversation with the developer. Um, it wouldn't dictate any way, shape or form, like whether there's fast action or not. Um, this just sort of sets us up to be able to do that in a timely manner whenever the decision is made to go forward.
That's lovely. Thank you.
I should add that, um, subsequent subdivisions such as plating the footprints of each individual lot that the owner will retain once the housing is built. And other easements like connections to the river and pedestrian pathways and alleyways that'll be privately maintained. Those will be platted all as separate subdivisions, just like we've done with Stables Village.
Anything else? Sarah, for the public's, um, perception of this piece of property, this really doesn't change anything, right? It's just that we're continuing moving forward and this is just another step in the process of that project.
Exactly. This is just, um, again pursuant to the master plan. The master plan was really the project approval. Um, and kind of dictated the density and the allowable housing and unit types on the property. Um, this is really just, again, a formality so we can convey to the developer.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any final questions for staff? Any comments from the public on council, uh, on the runway subdivision town project? Go ahead and approach. Um, go ahead and approach and just state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Gail Marshall and I've lived out on Airport Road since nineteen ninety-nine. I started running in that neighborhood in nineteen ninety-three. Um, it's a great little area. Uh, and I've watched the changes. When I first purchased out there, that area was supposed to be softball fields. Obviously it's not softball fields and it slowly became free skier parking. A lot of my concerns has to do with the population density that has occurred. The noise, the, um, and you can see on what I wrote last week before I came, the loss of free skier parking. We do have a parking problem within the town. Even though we have built a wonderful parking structure, that still does not help the parking situation. The increase of development on North Airport Road has increased the amount of traffic. I was talking on the phone before I came here. The person I was talking to asked if I was driving in my car. It was just the traffic going by my house. The values of the real estate on Airport Road has changed. I wonder about if we do have a disaster on Airport Road, the fire, how will the emergency evacuation plan? What will that be? I know Sharon has been very diligent on taking care of things, but it still concerns me. Um, how will these increase? People will want to have ADUs, accessory dwell, dwelling units attached to their units. That will just add more to the units that go on there. It just increases population. I drive around the units that are driving, that have been built on North Airport Road. And it seems more urban than a small town feel. I talked to a friend of mine that works for Habitat for Humi, Humanity. Uh, and she talks about what they did up in Silverthorne. Those apartment buildings up there look like prisons. I was shocked when I was driving to Kremlin. I hadn't seen those before. I just get concerned about overdevelopment. Grandview on the way up to Peak Eight, those were supposed to be employee housing. Those have become short-term rentals. What are we doing? We're going into an economic depression. What is going to happen next? What are we doing with all of this? We need to sit back before we keep developing. I keep thinking what Ethan Guvero talked about. When I came.
Thank you, Gail. That's your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you so much for your comment. Any other public comments? Public comment is closed. Um, Gail, we did have a discussion with, um, with staff about some of the traffic and speeding concerns, and they're absolutely going to look at that. We do have an evacuation plan for the whole county that's being planned right now. So that's something that we're all thinking about. It's certainly on the forefront of our minds. And we're, um, working really diligently to make sure that we keep safety a priority for the community. But, um, thank you for your entire comment and we'll continue to work with staff on what we can, um, how we can do the best job with that piece of property that we can. All right. Public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve town project hearing PL dash two zero two five dash zero one seven zero. Uh, with the title that has been read into the reading.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? This is really just on, um, this piece of the project. So we have to be careful to make sure that we're really just talking about the subdivision at this point. Any discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Council member Sade. Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. Moving on, we have already gotten the report of town manager and staff. Is there anything else? Okay, we've done the report of mayor and council members. Any other other matters? You like how I said that? All right. Um, anything, Shannon?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right. That's it. Meeting adjourned.